Good evening. At this time, we'd like to convene the city council meeting for Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Would the clerk please call the roll? Here.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Councilmember DuBois?
Here.
Councilmember Philsepp?
Here.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka? For the record, all present.
Thank you. So our first item tonight is a selection of applicants to interview for the Architectural Review Board. And we have an opportunity for members of the public to speak before we come back to the council and consider a motion. Do we have any members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
Mayor Burt, there's no request to speak on this item.
Okay. So colleagues, does anyone have a now I always see lights. Don't have that up here. So what I'm going to need is for people to point out to me when they oh, there we are. Councilmember Cormac.
Excellent. And just a point of clarification with the mayor, for those of us in here prefer hands-on Zoom or lights here or both?
I can see these.
Lights here. Okay, great. I will move that we interview all of the new applicants for the Architectural Review Board.
Second.
And did you wish to speak to your motion?
I think it's consistent with our past practice.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Koo, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
All right. And
Sorry. So just to be clear then, if we interviewed
Councilmember DuBois?
Yeah, I just want to be clear on the motion. So we interviewed people previously. We're not going to interview them in this cycle.
That was my intent.
So perhaps we can have the motion clearer. Councilmember Cormac?
Oh, I believe, yes, thank you so much, Vice Mayor Koo. I think I said all new applicants.
Thank you.
All right. But you, DuBois, okay, I see no other council members who wish to speak on the topic. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Philsepp?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And so we have not determined a date, as I understand it, for the interviews. And so that there will be polling of the council and then we'll notify the applicants and look forward to the interviews. So our next item is agenda changes, additions and deletions. I'm not aware of any. And so we move on to public comment. And yes. Oh, it is. Let's see. Yes, and it's not on this copy. So
Would you like? Helpful if I give you the amount.
So before hearing from on public comment, we have a special order of the day from the Friends of the Palo Alto Library and who will be making a presentation, as I understand it, or
Yes.
Yes. So who would like to commence with that?
I think I'm the only presenter for the Friends of the Palo Alto Library. My name is Jenny Monroe and I'm the newly elected president, so I've only been in office for about six weeks. I've been a Palo Alto resident for more than fifty years. So so I will make this brief because I know you have a lot of business to get through. And there are a lot of facts in here, but I I hope that I'll just, you know, make the salient points about what the Friends of the Palo Alto Library does and how we do it and what we contribute to the libraries in the community. So the Friends of the Palo Alto Library, which I'll refer to as FOPAL hereafter, was organized by a group of people in nineteen thirty-eight. They met at the Mayfield, then, library. Some decades later, in nineteen sixty-six, FOPAL was incorporated and its stated goal, which is the same today, so I'm going to read it, is to maintain an association of people interested in enriching and publicizing the resources of the library and to support library activities in the interest of the community. So that's what FOPAL is all about. The first book sale, we are known for our big book sales, the first was held in nineteen sixty-nine and that time it was annual, so only one book sale a year. By the late eighties, FOPAL was holding monthly book sales at the main library, what's now Rinconauta, and Turman Park Library. And by nineteen ninety-two, so a decade later, the book sales were being held monthly at FOPAL's Turman site. So at that time, all of FOPAL's activities were at Turman. The gross sales in two thousand, we're jumping ahead again, exceeded a hundred thousand dollars and FOPAL was handling ten thousand books a month. So we had upped our game quite a bit by then. In two thousand and two, FOPAL moved to Coverly and installed a mobile unit for the main room. Later, it took over JCC's mobile unit for the children's room and annex, which is, as those of you know who've been there, is at the extreme south end behind Coverly. The main room is at the north end. Later, the bargain room was was moved from K seven, where it was originally, to H two at the city's invitation. And FOPAL paid for renovations to H two, three and four, where we still have the bargain room. Online sales began in two thousand and six and CDs and records were also being sold. We did also sell some ephemera and art, but that has become kind of minimal. In two thousand, the two thousand eighteen nineteen sales totaled three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, of which eighty-six thousand, almost a quarter, were high-value sales. So this is something relatively new. We've been selling books and making lots of money for many years, but selling high-value items is relatively new and I'll mention that again. So remember, pre-COVID, two eighteen, two nineteen, our sales totaled three hundred and fifty-six thousand. In twenty nineteen and twenty, so COVID, the sales totaled two hundred and seventy-four thousand, of which almost ninety-six thousand were high-value. And in twenty twenty twenty-one, still COVID, we were down a little bit to two hundred and fifty-two thousand. And of that, over a hundred thousand now were high-value, a hundred and five thousand. So about forty percent of the sales were high-value. So this was because we weren't having sales during the worst of the COVID epidemic. But of course, our high-value sellers were still able to sell online. So they they brought in a significant amount of the money that kept us afloat. So just to remind you, pre-COVID, about three thousand five hundred in sales, but then during COVID, a hundred thousand less than that. Friends and family sales, small groups by appointment for just two hours a day, were instituted in mid-two thousand and twenty. And these sales, along with the ongoing and increasingly lucrative high-value sales, kept kept us going over the years of the pandemic pandemic. So the friends and family sales, the main room, the bargain room, the children's room, each opened for two hours a day at different times, ten to twelve, twelve to two. And up to seven people could come in and browse and buy books. So that, you know, that provided us quite a bit of income too, but more from high value. Okay, so just to give you an idea of sort of how we operate and what we're operating with, the number of books donated, processed and sold by FOPAL is a lot. In our main room, there are about forty thousand books and another thirty thousand in the bargain room and perhaps fifteen thousand in the children's room. So if you all come to a sale, which we hope you will do in March, because that'll be our first say, in-person sale for a while, that's how many books you could expect to be able to choose from. We rely on many, many volunteers. We have over a hundred active volunteers to help run the organization. And they are under the able leadership of the volunteer coordinator and general manager, Jeanette Hersig, who has been with FOPAL for over ten years. Approximately fifteen donation monitors and twenty sorters come every week to process the donations, get them to the appropriate sections. And there are more than forty section managers and numerous helpers that then price the books, shelve the books, and sometimes send them on either to high value, if they've looked them up and they look to be, you know, pretty valuable, or else if they're at the other end of the scale, a bit tatty or old, they go to the bargain room. After our monthly sales, books that are not sold in the bargain room are offered free first to teachers and nonprofits and then to the general public. So there are afternoons, Monday and Tuesday, after the weekend sale, when teachers can come and get as many books as they want, no cost, nonprofits the same. And then after they've all had their turn, the next evening, anybody from the public can come and take whatever they want. It's all about getting books out there. Our high-value team, led by Nigel Jones, a long-term volunteer who was president before Nancy Cohen. They used to have a sort of a skeleton crew of only six or seven people. But now Nigel has twelve people because we've had new volunteers coming in recently. And so they are in a much better position to sell even more high value. There's a number of people who work on eBay and then a number who work with Amazon sales. And we have a partnership with a bookseller in the North Bay, Moran Forest Books, and we're increasingly selling books with him. And then a few of the really high-value things go to the Pacific Book Auction in San Francisco. FOPAL makes annual grants to the library. This year it is eighty thousand dollars, this fiscal year ending in June, compared to the pre-pandemic figure of approximately two hundred thousand a year. And of course, we'd love to get back up to that. These funds are in support of library collections, youth and adult programs and outreach. Our work is done in three buildings in Coverly. Again, many of you have been there. So we have the bargain room, the H Wing, closest to the Piazza's Little Plaza. And then the main room is in the very back and then the children's room back by the by the running oval at the other end of the Coverly campus. And because they're so far apart, we have to rely on carts to transport books, you know, hither and yon between the three the three sites. We do pay about twenty-five thousand a year to the City of Palo Alto in rent. And something comparable to that to modal, mobile modular for the for the for the the H two, the annex, children's room and main rooms. So that's that's one of our major expenses is rent. I think that's all I have to say. I hope that wasn't too fast and was informative enough. And
I don't see any questions yet. I would like to say thank you to you and all the members of FOPAL who donate their time and support our libraries in ways that we could not otherwise provide the services that that come from your contributions. And it's also a great testimony to not only how long this organization has been serving the community, but how many volunteers you have. It's really great and we please share with all your members our appreciation.
I will, I will. And we appreciate your appreciating us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay for part of this because I want to hear about pets in need.
All right. Thank you. All right. So that concludes our special order. And we are next moving on to public comments, which are the period for members of the public to speak to items that are not otherwise on the agenda. And public comments are allowed and civil discourse is encouraged on any matter within the jurisdiction of the City of Palo Alto. Conduct that disrupts the meetings, including violent threats, is not allowed. So we have so far three members of the public who have signed up to speak and more coming in. Give it a moment. All right. So each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. We'll be concluding sign-ups for speakers in just a moment as the first speaker comes on. So if anybody else wishes to sign up, please do so at this time. Our first speaker is Winter Dellenbach. Welcome.
Happy Valentine's Day to you all. You all deserve a lot of credit and a lot of love for being on the city council. We appreciate you. As council members know, a mature protected oak tree on federally owned land at the downtown post office was nearly chainsawed down this week. I have a couple of questions about it. I can see online that the process for, it seems like the first application to remove this tree and three others, well, two of them were dead and maybe a third, I'm not sure, was August of two thousand and twenty-one. And yet, when this tree removal actually was taking place, our urban forester was not even aware of it. He was somehow left out of the loop and that greatly concerns me. And that's one of the two main points I want to make today. Well, maybe three main points. Because a lot, a lot incident, the tree was saved because of an alert. Residents stepped in, stopped it and asked the urban forester to come over, who took a look. And so it's still, the live oak tree is still standing. It's not clear why the live oak is being taken down. Health assessment will probably be done. You know, Palo Alto now employs some fairly high-tech equipment that can look inside of a trunk of a tree and underground. It's pretty cool and perhaps that needs to be used. But the two things I want to express my concern about is, one, that the urban forester, our expert, such a smart guy, did not know about this tree removal. And that's wrong and that really disturbs me. I think more of the process and the facts of this will be explained and will be explained fully and publicly. Second is I'm very curious because I was involved in trying to save the, which we did, the Dawn Redwood and get water to it on this federally federally owned piece of property and was told that the city had no jurisdiction there, could do nothing to get water there. And I finally got ahold of Anna Eshu, our Congresswoman, and she stepped in and actually enabled there to get water in their canopy was a huge help with that, but it was only after getting a Congresswoman. And so I would really like to have an explanation about how the city interfaced with the feds in doing this work. So aside from, and I understand that some replacement trees are involved. I'm wrapping up, but we would like to have these questions answered and more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Simon to be followed by Aram James. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I am Deborah Simon, Chair of Friends of Coverly. Our mission is to support and advocate for the redevelopment of Coverly for the benefit of the entire Palo Alto community and our neighboring cities. We are exhausted from waiting for action by the city council and the school board. There are seven acres up for discussion, the question of why Coverly has not been on the capital infrastructure plan, among other related issues and problems that need action. We are many years down the road here with no action having been taken. As representatives of the many organizations who call Coverly home, we are asking for action. This is an important property to our community that needs attention from the youngest of our community to the eldest. For everyone who uses this space, it deserves attention from our elected officials. On a personal level, I have been associated with the Palo Alto Chamber Orchestra for forty-five years now. We've been using M one and M two since then with no improvements or change to the rooms. The broken shelves are still broken. The floor tiles now have huge holes in them. Their doorknobs are the same doorknobs that I used to enter M two four and a half decades ago. Please act now. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so everyone understands, the Coverly item is actually item number eight. I assume Ms. Simon was intending to speak to that item, but our next speaker is Aram James to be followed by Alexander. We don't have a last name there. Welcome, Mr. James.
Mayor Burt, I know that from our email exchanges and other things that you you take a hard line against racism. And this is Black History Month. We talked a lot after May of two thousand and twenty, after George Floyd's murder, about the supporting the Black Lives Matter movement, including a beautiful Black Lives Matter mural in Palo Alto. But we also know we don't have any black police officers in the City of Palo Alto. I also sent around to all of you to take a look at, James Baldwin's amazing. You know, in the video, take this hammer and his comment on just what the N word really means and who owns that. It's white people, not black people. He suggests very strongly and poetically and compellingly. The cowardly act last Monday. I I really believe that you have would rebuke those comments by an anonymous speaker who used disparaging words towards the black population and more specifically misogynistic comments that could be taken as threats against Rebecca Eisenberg. I believe it's appropriate for the entire city council to rebuke these statements, to condemn the statements that were made anonymously. And it's a different thing. I remember Mr. Webb coming before the council in making what I consider to be hateful comments about different races. But he did it openly and notoriously so that people could see where he was. But it's in the tradition of the Ku Klux Klan to make these kind of anonymous threats, these angry threats, these racist threats, that people we all know that those threats unfortunately sometimes turn into actual criminal conduct. So I think at a minimum, though, that this council needs to also refer the tape of that meeting to Jeff Rosen, our current district attorney, and let him decide whether it crossed the line into a terrorist threat, a term of art under the penal code. But certainly, there's nothing that prohibits the mayor and the city council from condemning the statements that were made as hate speech, condemning them decisively and doing it as soon as this evening. So that's my call to the mayor and to the city council. I know that Mr. Tanaka and I have talked about hate speech and the terrible sting that it has when it's when it's directed at Asian folks. Same applies to any discreet group. So please do the right thing, condemn the speech, do it now and refer to the police and the district attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alexander and please feel free to introduce yourself with your last name to be followed by Liz.
Hello, my name is Alexander Stein. Sorry, I'm using for a Zoom meeting. I didn't want some different thing. I just didn't want them to know my last name. But yes, my name is Alexander Stein. And the reason why I'm calling in today is because moving to Palo Alto is one of the biggest regrets that I've ever had in my entire life. I had met a girl on OnlyFans.com who is one of the biggest content creators for the website and she convinced me to move to Silicon Valley. She said it would be the future of our relationship. We would be able to invest all this money into cryptocurrency and that I should quit my job. But I worked at a bank for eleven years in Dallas, Texas. And I moved to Palo Alto. Knowing that Tui had two kids, I ended up getting close to her and her children. And I come to find out she was running a whole entire Bitcoin scam, getting people to invest in it and pulling the rug. And she did that on me and she broke my heart. And now I can't get in contact with her and we have joint bank accounts. But the reason why I'm here in front of the council today is because I believe with Google's help, I could I could find out the keys to our accounts and I can get some of this Bitcoin back. And I know that she took this maliciously, you know, she she committed crimes and she did this. I mean, she has evidence of me doing stuff sexually that she's using as blackmail against me. And I'm not, I'm not afraid anymore. I don't care. I don't care if the world sees what she has of me doing and that stuff. I don't care anymore. What I want is justice. What I want is that money back because I'm broke. I'm living in one of the most inclusive cities in the world and I can't even afford to really provide myself. But with the cyber crimes unit of Google, very easily we could find this because not only is she involved in prostitution, she's also involved in gerrymandering, vote rigging, all kinds of stuff. I mean, she, her, her new boyfriend, she had a boyfriend the whole time. Ends up confronting me at my job. I worked at Starbucks. I ended up getting fired from Starbucks. I gave everything I had.
Mr. Stein, public comments are limited to topics that are on the jurisdiction of the city council?
Yes, I know. But this is why I need your help because in Palo Alto with the mayor's help, we can actually get Google to do something about this. Because she is a menace to this society. She can vote. She's not a legal citizen. She has eight sisters that she has brought over here illegally. The city council should know about that. Those votes, she's going to vote in these council elections. And so I'm trying to bring attention to this and you're saying that, oh, it's not a council matter, yet I had her OnlyFans account, some of the video and content that we produce is the most vulnerable stuff that I've ever did. It was disgusting. And I'm actually humiliated with myself. And if I'm willing to actually put myself out there like this to the council and for you to shut me down like this, it's humiliating. And it's more humiliating than what she made stuffed up my derriere. It's more humiliating than that. So I asked for the council's help in contacting Google and getting these crypto keys and getting this money back so I can move back to Texas.
Our next speaker is Liz. Please feel free to introduce yourself.
I'm unmuted. Okay, this is Liz Gardner. So I apologize for not giving you my last name and I'll try to keep it calm. There was three things I wanted to bring up to the council tonight. One was, I live at twenty-five hundred Al Camino Real. It's one of the newest, very low-income complexes run by Related California. And I'm really having some issues with the property as well as many of my neighbors. Ninety-five percent of us are working low-wage jobs, service jobs. And we're really kind of been kind of hanging out in the cold as far as the complex, the internal workings are. Water is like at ninety degrees and the trash is really, really not good, the way they've got it set up. There's been maggots coming out of the bathroom. And I mean, there's a lot of details. It looks really good on the outside. If you were to drive by, even if you were to walk through the courtyard. But the amenities that are supposed to be contractually offered to us, like getting computer time to look for jobs and work and work on our resumes. There's very little communication. It's supposed to be a one hundred percent affordable, one hundred percent ADA. They're getting one hundred percent tax credits, I believe. They're a one hundred percent for-profit company and I, you know, the management is now only working part-time between two jobs, between two properties. And I don't know what the city can do and how I can mitigate this or facilitate it through the city. But it's really not providing families with really sustainable living at the rate that it's happening. Number two I wanted to talk about, and I know crime is on the rise and the council is really aware of that, especially with youth and low-income youth in our community. And I was really hoping that the council could look at the recreation scholarship program at fifty percent, especially in these times, COVID and the economy. I was really hoping maybe we, low-income people could get up to eighty percent sliding scale based on income. I was really hoping maybe we low income people could get up to eighty percent sliding scale based on income for recreational services. The third thing I'd like to bring up is I've been trying to find out what happened to the CARES Act money that the city of Palo Alto was awarded. Has that been spent? What was it spent on? Is it possible that it could go into either housing, affordable housing or recreation services for low income people or especially youth? And that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. That concludes our public comments. And but city manager, can Ms. Gardner contact you to be able to be referred to our manager, human services to look at the affordable housing issue that maintenance issue?
Certainly, that would be fine. She can email me at either my name or might be easier at citymanager@cityofpaloalto.org. That's C I T Y M G R with abbreviation at cityofpaloalto.org.
Thank you. So our next item is the consent calendar. We have six items on the consent calendar and Vice Mayor Koo.
I'd like to pull number five, please.
Councilmember Tanaka.
I'll support her on point five and no on six and seven.
Okay. And I would support pulling item number five as well. And Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull five as well. And perfect, and I'm recused on item seven.
Thank you. So at this time, we would like to let members of the public. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember DuBois.
Did you want to motion or?
We'll wait until after the public has spoken. Members of the public who would like to speak on the consent calendar, do we have any who wish to speak? Okay, we so far have one member, Elizabeth Alexis. Well, Elizabeth, welcome, and we'll see if there are any other members while you're speaking. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. I'm calling to also recommend pulling the AECOM contract item. I think this is something that needs to be discussed. I would have some concerns about moving forward with sort of reevaluating things that the current consultant has worked on by being led by the current consultant. I think based upon the work that I have done, I've testified at the state senate on the specific topic on peer review for transportation projects that it's a very difficult process, no matter what. And this would not be a kind of peer review that you would think would lead to sort of any kind of different outcome than what you already have. The second item is, as the person who came up with the the design at Charleston, I feel like the next step is not to just keep working in in sort of the same direction, but it's to really step back and now that we know the community concerns, is start to think about what how do we do a design that meets those requirements as far as biking and pet and everything else instead of instead of what we're doing now. And I also think that we we really want to think about, instead of maybe some of this work being done by ourselves, especially on innovative methods that would be used across many different projects. We really should support efforts by Caltrain to do this. That seems like it would make a lot more sense and would leverage the importance of multiple projects and and being open to new ideas rather than than just for our own city. Thank you.
Thank you. And that appears to conclude our public comments on this. Councilmember DuBois, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the consent calendar.
Well, second, with the caveat that the action minutes, item two, section three B should reflect that Councilmember Stone was recused and did not abstain.
Okay, with that note, and we have a we have three members who, or four, rather, who requested item number five to be removed. So that's automatically removed. So that will not be voted on. And then Councilmember Tanaka voted is voting no on six and seven, and Councilmember Stone is recused on item seven. So with those, oh, Vice Mayor Koo, did you have? We now we go ahead if it's a clarifying question, but we can't talk to the substance.
If I may, clarifying to see if we might be able to put it on the agenda for tonight?
Yes. Thank you. So, Mr. City Manager, would we be able to put that immediately preceding item eight?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I appreciate the the heads up that I received on this interest pursuant to your rules. I believe that if the interest is to have a brief discussion of where this recommendation will go, that that could be accommodated as your first action item this evening.
Thank you. And so that would be numbered eight A. Is that how we do it? I think so. Yes. All right. On that note, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Philseth?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Motion carries as presented. Thank you.
Could I just ask the clerk to remove item five from the initial motion? It should read two, two through four and six and seven. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes our consent calendar. And our next item is city manager comments. Mr. Shikata.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, let's see, could we get the city clerk's assistance in putting slides up?
Sorry, does Councilmember Tanaka speak?
I'm sorry. That's correct. Councilmember Tanaka, you have an opportunity to speak to your no votes.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember DuBois. So let's see, on six. So in general, I support AMI. I think it's a it's a good thing. The problem I had with it is, first of all, it was on a high end of the bid range in terms of subscription costs. That sounds a bit disturbing, especially given our budget situation. But the thing that really disturbed me on it is that it had a $23,000 termination penalty, which is highly unusual for SaaS contracts. And I didn't see any good rationale why there would be such a high termination penalty. So in case like the C runs into budgetary issues, to have to pay the termination penalty, which is equivalent to one year's worth of subscription fees, is rather excessive. So, you know, this wasn't actually, so there's no explanation. At least I couldn't find one as to why. But I I can't support it because of that, although I do think AMI in general is a good idea. And then on seven, I'm just consistent with my prior vote on it.
Thank you. So now on to city manager comments. Mr. Shikata.
Thank you, councilmembers. Let's see. I want to make sure I'm tracking the right windows here. So thank you, City Clerk's Office. Next slide, please. All right, I'd like to provide our weekly update on events related to the pandemic. As always, have our information available for members of the public to get vaccinated, to the extent not already covered. Real update this week is notice from Santa Clara County that our mask mandate will continue. And there are specific metrics that the county has identified as being proposed for the secession of the mask mandate with eighty percent vaccination rate for the local population, low hospitalizations and a seven-day average of new cases that are at or below five hundred and fifty within the county of Santa Clara. And that's our understanding of how the criteria will be used going forward for the elimination of the mask mandate for Santa Clara County. Then finally, noting that as while we had hoped to have some progress on the availability of vaccinations for youth under five, that we understand that the U.S. Food and Drug Administration has delayed that in order to get additional data. Next slide, please. Here in Palo Alto would note that our services are continuing to evolve. As indicated here, we're restoring the library's pre-Omicron phase service hours, which increases availability of branch libraries at downtown college terrorists and children's branches, as well as additional hours at Rinconada and rooms available at Mitchell Park as well. Additional informations on our website and also have ongoing testing available for community members. Next slide, please. Would note a bit of a roll up here in some community engagement opportunities that are in the upcoming weeks. Tomorrow, we have our Neighbors Abroad and Sibling Cities, USA kickoff celebration with Palo Alto and Bloomington, Indiana. And next, I'll just roll through these very quickly. Got our Housing Element ad hoc this Thursday. Fiber Community Information Session next week on the twenty-fourth at 5:30 PM. Objective Standards Community Meeting for zoning changes or zoning applications on March twenty-second, so a bit further out. And our fiscal sustainability really rolling into broader community discussions will further out in March. Information on all of these events are available at our homepage under the calendar. Next slide, please. Also, some community events upcoming. We have virtual meditation cent session at our Art Center on the seventeenth at noon. Then Palo Alto Library Author Event. And I looked this up, Provin Sal, I think is the correct pronunciation, or as close as I'm going to get, on the twenty-third and Junior Museum and Zoo Event on Saturday, the twenty-seventh. Next slide, please. Then a city-sponsored emergency preparedness training upcoming on the Saturday, the nineteenth in the afternoon, as well as CERT training coming up on March seventh in the evening. So no better time to get up to date. And if you haven't already been involved with this program, our staff would be happy to get community members involved with our CERT and block preparedness coordinator programs. Next slide, please. Then finally, noting some upcoming council items. Again, the council will be dark next Monday for the President's Day holiday, then returning on the twenty-eighth of February. On that agenda, we have a few action items, a public hearing related to weight abatement. The first council discussion of the response to the Civil Grand Jury Report on Affordable Housing and the continued discussion related to our currently closed streets. Then on March seventh, we have a joint session with the Council on Utilities Advisory Commission on our Sustainability and Climate Action Plan. The Parks and Recreation Commission Recommendation related to a community gymnasium project and the item that was previously on your consent calendar related to foothills fire mitigation. Then later on in March, we have some key upcoming discussions. The Independent Police Auditor Update, the follow-up on the lease of the Roth Building and the committee, Council Committee Work Plans that was deferred from your retreat, as well as later in March, a couple of, actually, three housing-related items on the twenty-first. Next slide, please. And that completes my report. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. And and just to note, the city manager mentioned the three different criteria and as his remarks has a check mark next to the eighty percent vaccination rate. And that is because our county has already exceeded that. We're at over eighty-four percent vaccination of the entire county and ninety percent of all those eligible and even higher percentages in Palo Alto and the community really deserves a lot of credit and the county staff and others for that really great achievement. That's, I believe, still the highest of any large county in the United States. So it's good work, folks. All right, our next item is item eight A, formerly item five, which is approval of an amendment, number four, to the contract with AECOM not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-two thousand for additional evaluation and outreach of railroad grade separation alternatives. And I don't know how much of a staff report we need if we perhaps can go to members of the public and then we'll have comments from the council with the possibility, as I understand it, of referral to the Rail Committee to review this and align it with the emerging Rail Committee Work Plan. So do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? And none? All right. So we'll return to the council.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one person.
Okay.
Liz, one second.
Hi, yeah, I I just I just really want to support the grade separation and the speed in which we want to do it. I know Palo Alto has gotten the bulk of the the budget for that from, I think, VTA and Measure B. So, you know, I think it's just critical with climate change going on right now. Sea level rise, COVID, getting transit. I know there's a lot out there right now with getting transit connected all the way around the bay. So I think expediting this as quickly as possible. I know the threat is is that they'll just go ahead and do it if we if we don't, even if when we don't decide on a preferred plan. So I my my overarching thesis is, you know, let's let's get it done so we can move on and get people on the train with this grade separation. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Koo, did you want to kick this off as both Chair of the Rail Committee and the first to request to be polled?
Sure. I think that I'd just go ahead and start working on a motion, which is to refer this item to the Rail Committee. And I can speak to it more after. I get a second.
I will second.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. So one of the matters that is that we should discuss further is the four-track situation. And that's been a big question for a long time now, and I think that's something that we should be talking about. In addition to the contract, where there are areas in there that I I see a little bit of a concern when we have a consultant who is going to be hiring a consultant and then doing a peer review on it. The other, and so, you know, I mean, with the Rail Committee now back in session, I think there's an opportunity for all of us to have a more, to be able to dive in there and make recommendations to the council, to the whole council. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Well, along the same lines, I think that from a sequencing standpoint, a lot of the elements that we're looking at evaluating next would follow, hopefully, getting some greater clarity from Caltrain on the area that they're still considering for four-track. And my understanding is they're looking for for cities like us to submit And my understanding is they're looking for, for cities like us to submit to them the arguments why certain areas, like our narrow section of the right-of-way in the Churchill area, are not really eligible for consideration of this, I think it's three miles or so of four-track that they're looking for in the Mountain View to Palo Alto area. And second, I do agree that, first, that the council didn't ask for a peer review of the work that had already been done. They asked for a second evaluation and study of the trench option by another party. And, and what seems to be in the proposal and the contract is a peer review that would be managed and overseen by the, the party who did the first item that's being reviewed, which is not really a check and balance in the way that we would hope, but that's, that wasn't the intent. And I don't think the direction of the, the council motion. So I think for several reasons, we're going to have the rail committee really diving into the next phases of this in the coming year. And I think engagement with the, some of the citizen stakeholders who brought forward, some of the very innovative designs should also be identified as part of the stakeholder engagement. So series of reasons that I think it'll be appropriate for the rail committee to flush this out and then bring it back to council. And Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, I was about to ask exactly what, what input or, or direction do we sort of anticipate the rail committee making here? Although I think you've described some of it, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How, how much do we anticipate, perhaps is a question for staff? This will delay work being done, just so I understand the, the timeframe? If, if we refer this to the rail committee, how much time does this add to our timeline?
Well, I, I'm not sure I can answer that, not having the rail committee meeting scheduled as of yet. But noting that, you know, we had intended to start work as soon as a contract is approved, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kami.
I just want to note that, you know, the, the rail committee won't be able to approve a contract. So what we would need to do is maybe to determine what would be in the contract before returning to council again. So there will be some.
Understood, and thank you, and welcome to our, our youngest staff member, potentially at past, past bedtime. Okay, and I guess then my other question is just the rail committee itself. So it's directed either at Vice Mayor Koo as the chair or the mayor. You know, we had a rail committee last year, but we didn't actually meet. So, you know, just for our understanding, are we anticipating meeting every month or on an as-needed basis? What, what are our thoughts?
It's still a discussion with the, with Mr. Shikata. And I would like to see it happen monthly so we can kind of explore a lot more and flush out a lot more of the technical situations. For example, the pet and bike east-west connections. Would like to hear from payback. And so that's something that I'd like to see discussed more in the rail committee.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, so I'm trying to figure this one out. So we voted and passed a lot of this work last year and directed staff to hire a consultant. And so it seems like this is coming to us in the normal course of business. I'd prefer to see us move forward with some of these without delay. And I guess I also want to be clear on what this motion is. It seems very broad. I don't think we're referring the entire rail plan to the rail committee at this point. I mean, we're in process, there are several elements here, so.
I, I don't think that's what the motion does. It refers to.
This is a contract with AECOM. Part of the contract was to support the rail committee in the February, March meeting. So do we, it's really a question for staff. I mean, if this doesn't pass, I mean, if we pull this, what's the impact on? It's kind of similar question, I guess Philip was asked, but, you know, is there money for AECOM to support rail meetings and that kind of thing going forward?
I suspect since this is a, a new step, that we would need to have this at least first rail committee meeting without support of AECOM. And that depending on the discussion and recommendations coming out of the committee may require, as Philip referenced, some renegotiation of scope with AECOM and then proceed from there.
I mean, we voted for like seven different items already, and I just don't want us to redo that work. So I guess if the motion were to split the contract and bring it back with the things so we can move forward. There's a refinement of the underpass alternatives, the geotechnical studies, the cost estimate, second opinion for the trench, which you talked about. Some of the technical support we just need ongoing. So the only thing I've heard in particular was this concern about the trench alternatives. So is the scope of this to revisit that and then bring a contract back?
No, I would say it's, as I stated, that it's to look at the alignment of the scope of work with the work plan and the sequencing that we would be looking at. When we discussed this as a council, we really didn't go through in depth on each of the items that would be proceeding. And, and I think it's really important to align that to make sure that it's in the right sequence of what we're doing. I agree that the geotechnical studies are the most clear ones that could proceed in the near future. The other aspects, I think, actually need to be thoughtfully considered on the sequencing and make sure that we're aligned there. And, and quite importantly is to look at whether we are paying a lot of money for consultants to look at a two-track option when it might be a four-track or vice versa, look at a four-track when we may only need a two-track. And so I think we need to make sure that we, we were looking at all those things. Also that all the other iterations would be influence on refinements to the alternatives that we had selected. And that's where some of the stakeholder outreach needs to be clarified to include the originators of those concepts and some of the community engineers who have participated in helping those concepts be as flushed out as they are today.
Okay, well, I, I would just again be concerned that we are revisiting a bunch of things. I'd urge the rail committee not to overly delay or create a lot of work that the council's already voted on. And yeah, again, I just want to express concerns about council getting involved and maybe a level of detail that I would expect staff to handle some of these items.
Okay, I don't see any other council members with hands raised. Oh, Councilmember Stone, sorry.
Yes, Mayor, just, no, really, just real quick. I, I found the maker and the seconders' arguments to be compelling. This is a complex, highly technical issue that seems ripe for the rail committee. I feel this is not the type of work that goes to the rail committee. I don't understand the point of having a rail committee. So I'm happy to, to support this motion. I'm, I'm interested in, in the, in the committee being able to look into. The Vice Mayor mentioned the, the east-west bike and pedestrian and, and the mayor mentioned the, the lack of oversight here. So I'm, I'm happy to support this. I do think this requires additional work that the rail committee is well-suited to address.
Thank you. So would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Cormac?
No.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Councilmember DuBois?
No.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Burt?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth?
No.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. Okay, so we will now proceed to item number eight, which is a discussion and provide direction to staff on continuing the Coverley Concept Plan, including the temporary relocation, well, in addition to that, the temporary relocation of Palo Verde and Hoover Elementary Schools to Coverley. And third, the potential opportunity to acquire additional land at Coverley. So city manager, who kicks this off?
That will be Director Okane for our Community Services Department.
Thank you. Welcome, Director Okane.
Thank you, Mayor Burt, and good evening, councilmembers. I'm Kristin Okane. I'm the Community Services Director. Is my presentation showing okay?
You might want to put it in presentation mode, Director Okane.
I thought I did.
Then it's, needs some work.
It's showing it like that on my screen.
We, we, oh, now we lost it. We can, we could see all the slides on the left, not a big deal, but just so you know.
Perhaps would the city clerk's office be able to run your slides? Looks like that's possible. Hold on for a moment, Director Okane. Looks good.
Thank you so much. So good evening again, Kristin Okane. I wanted to provide some updates tonight related to Coverley Community Center and the adjacent Greendale School Campus. These are the Coverley Concept Plan, temporary relocation of the two elementary schools, and potential for PAUSD-owned land at Coverley to be made available to the city. So just a very short background to orient everyone to the current ownership and uses at Coverley. And you can go to the next slide, please, clerk. So Coverley is a 35-acre site, and the city owns eight acres and the school district owns 27 acres. Greendale School is right next door to the Coverley Campus. Historically, the city leased all of the school district's portion of Coverley back to 1990, actually, and includes both, all the building, included the buildings and the fields, and the city operated as a community center. As part of the city's fiscal year '21 budget process and in response to impacts on the city's financial outlook due to the pandemic, the amount of space leased by the city was reduced. So the city still leases the theater, gyms, pavilion, and athletic fields and rents them for community use. And on the city-owned portion of Coverley, there are about 24 tenants and 25 artists with long-term leases and also space for short-term rentals. So I'm going to jump into the discussion related to the Coverley Concept Plan, which also includes a recommendation for council direction on next steps. And then I will turn the presentation over to CSD Senior Analyst Sarah Duffy and Chief Transportation Official Philip Kami to provide the update on the school relocation efforts. I do want to note, I believe we have Eric Holm from the school district here for that particular item, if there's questions for him. And finally, I'll provide some information on the potential opportunity for additional land at Coverley. Okay, so the Coverley Concept Plan was completed in November 2019 after a community co-design process involving four interactive meetings. The first was in September of 2018 and the final one was in May 2019. We had almost 500 individual community members participate in this iterative process. And the city and the school district shared in the cost of developing the concept plan. So now that that's complete, I mean, it has been for a little over two years. For the city council to adopt the concept plan, environmental analysis must be completed. So a CEQA consultant was hired and that process did begin for a number of reasons, though, including changes in CEQA law that required some analysis to be redone, a shift in priorities of staff at the start of the pandemic, and limited availability of support staff to assist with the CEQA analysis. That document is not yet completed. So we, I also included in the staff reports some information on the school districts' priorities related to Coverley and how those have shifted slightly since we started the master planning process. They, the school district has said that they are still interested in reserving space at the school district for a future school. But that would probably be many years out. That's, there's not a need for a future school now. But in the event that there was, they would like to reserve about 20 acres of their Coverley land for that space. We also know that they no longer are interested at the moment in pursuing moving their administrative offices to Coverley or pursuing housing there. So they've also, and they've also identified some potential funding issues associated with the shared-use buildings that were included in the concept plan that would have had shared time between school uses and community uses. So at this point, it would be helpful for council to provide staff with direction on whether and how to move forward. If we do continue with the CEQA document, we would return to council with the recommendation to adopt the Coverley Concept Plan as it was drafted in November 2019, and also the accompanying CEQA document that we would still need to complete. If we do not continue, that work will remain as a resource for future use. It has information on not only infrastructure desirability, but also programming at Coverley. And that document could be picked up again at some point in the future when we have a better understanding of our plans for Coverley and how we would like to move forward. So with that, I will now turn it over to Sarah Duffy from the Community Services Department and Philip Kami. And you can advance the slide, clerk.
Thank you, Director Kane. So my name is Sarah Duffy, and it's really nice to be here this evening. I'm going to cover updates on the school relocations. I'm, I've been working as kind of the point person on this, so working quite a bit with Eric Holm, who is the Director of Facilities and Construction at PAUSD. So in the next three academic years, starting next fall with school year 2022-23 and continuing on through school year 2024-25, there are two major construction projects that'll occur at Palo Verde and at Hoover Elementary Schools that require relocation of students to the Greendale School Campus. In preparation, Palo Alto Unified has had quite a number of meetings with school community, general community, public board meetings, and they're continuing to meet with different constituent groups. And since October 2021, the city staff and Palo Alto Unified staff have been working together to address different logistical questions in preparation for the relocation. Next slide, please. Okay, so here you can see a diagram of the relocation. It's kind of small, so hopefully it's visible, it's more easily visible in your packets, if this isn't super clear. But you can see the gray buildings here that with the numbers one through 10, those are the existing Greendale structures, so that's on the Coverley Campus. And those will be where classrooms for students in grades K through three are located. And then where you see the blue squares, those will be portable structures in the Greendale parking lot, and those will house classrooms for students in grades four through five, a bathroom building, administrative offices, and a music arts building. And you'll see when we get to the timeline when those portables will be moved to the parking lot areas. And then adjacent parking areas will be reconstructed to provide safe pedestrian parking and access. Next slide, please. And with this one, I will turn it over to Philip Kami to talk through the transportation considerations.
Okay, good evening again. I'm Philip Kami, Chief Transportation Official from the Office of Transportation. I don't have my helper this time. But for the Office of Transportation and our Safe Routes to School Team, changes to traffic circulation and making certain that the students are safe with these changes are our key interests. The Office of Transportation's been working with PAUSD to identify any potential issues that will occur with these changes and to work towards solutions with PAUSD and their consultant. In addition to capturing our input, PAUSD has also been presenting and seeking feedback at our City School Traffic Safety Committee meetings and with our Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. A couple of new activities related to this that I want to bring your attention to. PAUSD is planning a bike audit of the route from Palo Verde to Greendale, which can lead to additional safety improvements, and also PAUSD. And also, PAUSD will hold multiple rolling bike-to-school trainings in the fall to help to teach the children in safety. And finally, for the proposal of redesign at the Hoover Elementary, it's going to likely require changes to the current street design at East Charleston Road and the entry and exits to the school, and also at the Waverly Bike Path. So Hoover concept plans for this redesign are being reviewed by the Office of Transportation, and we'll go to the City School Traffic Safety Committee and the Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee multiple times for input before the designs are approved and finalized. And we're currently working with PAUSD on the outreach that's going to be needed for the surrounding neighborhoods. And with that, we can go to the next slide. I think I'm handing it back to somebody. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. And these are some additional key considerations. So in addition to the, the transportation considerations, the city and PAUSD have looked carefully at the lease agreement between the city of Palo Alto and PAUSD around Coverley usage. And the relocation is, will not impact any of the city-owned or leased sections of Coverley, so there's no adjustment to the lease that's necessary. That said, students, staff, and their families will be utilizing some of the common areas of Coverley that are shared between city and PAUSD, including parking, walkways, restrooms, and other portions of the Coverley Campus. The school district is working with city utilities to install new electrical services at the site to serve the portable village. And in, starting next year, the after-school programs for Palo Verde students, and subsequently for Hoover students, will utilize one or more of PAUSD rooms in Coverley. The exact room locations are still being determined, and that's being done in coordination with the fire department in Palo Alto to make sure that the rooms are up for code, depending on the number of students that would be in the rooms. And so far, everything looks good, and the main adjustments are really to signage in those areas. Next slide, please. And here you have just a relocation timeline. There's a lot of activity happening this spring, starting in March. PAUSD is going to begin to prepare Greendale to house Palo Verde Elementary during the spring break. Most of the portables will move to the parking lots adjacent to Greendale. In June, the two remaining portables that are currently in use will be moved to Greendale after school finishes. In the summer, Palo Verde Elementary teachers and staff will move into Greendale in preparation for the academic year that's upcoming next year, and Palo Verde Elementary will then occupy Greendale. So they're there just for the year, and then in summer 2023, Hoover Elementary teachers and staff will move to Greendale. And then for the two academic years following that, Hoover Elementary will occupy Greendale. So that is the timeline for the relocation. And I believe, next slide. That is, that's it for the relocation, and I'll pass it back to Director Okane.
Great, thank you, Sarah and Philip. I combined your names there into one. So we're shifting back to looking at Coverley as a whole. And the reason we're including this is to really just show the whole picture of what's, the conversations are happening right now around Coverley. So as I mentioned, at a recent Board of Education meeting, Superintendent Don Austin shared sort of his vision for the future of their site, which would include resuming, reserving 20 acres for a future school. Again, there isn't an identified need now, but if there were in the future, they would want to make sure that they were holding on to space for that use and express to the board that there would be potential for the city to acquire the remaining seven acres that they currently owned, either through a land swap or purchase. But really, no, not many other details have been discussed right now. We did a preliminary conversation of potential areas, including the Ventura Community Center, which was once owned by the school district, but nothing beyond, you know, very early preliminary conversations. So there's no timeframe on that. But again, we just wanted to share, since it has been discussed, and we wanted to just paint the full picture around Coverley. So with that, that concludes our presentation. So we are all here for questions and follow-up. And again, we just had the one request for direction from council, and that's related to the Coverley Concept Plan and how we move forward with that. But again, we're here to answer questions on any of these topics. So back to you, Mayor Burt.
Thank you. So before hearing from members of the public, do council members have technical questions that they would like to ask of the staff? Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thank you. Two questions. If seven acres were available, do we know which seven acres, or is it fungible?
We do not. And we've, you know, started having some preliminary conversations of what would make the most sense. I have my personal opinions that it would, you know, the frontage to Middlefield might make the most sense if we're ahead of them, but nothing.
But flexible per discussion with the school district?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Well, thanks. And the second question is, if I understand what you said about the, the CEQA study, it's not throwaway work if we don't pursue it now, or is it? That is, if we don't pursue it now, but we pursue it in the future, do we have to redo work we've already done, or can we set it aside and it's still there for us in the future, so we don't have to do it?
I would say it's not throwaway work. However, that's dependent on, are there future developments nearby that might impact future traffic? Things like that. So it's work that could be built upon later, but it's not something we would just throw away and not look at again.
Right. It doesn't become obsolete next year, and we would have to do it again.
That's correct.
I don't, yeah, throwaway, I don't mean it as literally, but you would throw away, just that it becomes obsolete and has to be redone. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth, or excuse me, DuBois.
Thank you. Was there any discussion about, you know, the playing fields being an ongoing kind of shared resource? You know, when you said the seven acres might be on Middlefield, obviously, we use tennis courts, the soccer fields, all that space.
So the tennis courts are on city-owned land, so we actually own the tennis courts already. Are you asking if there's a potential for us to acquire the fields from the seven acre?
Not to acquire, but basically continue to have a shared use on athletic fields.
I understand, right. So I, we haven't gone into, again, detailed discussions on this, but I think it would be at least until there was a point where they needed a school and needed that land for school use. I think there'd be a definite interest from the school district in continuing the current agreement in place, which is for us to lease it, and then we rent it out, or have it available for the community.
Okay. And I know I saw before, I was trying to find it. Do you, do you know how much we've paid in rent over the years to, for the Coverley property?
Currently, or?
In total. I know we discussed it at one point, but I can't put my fingers on it.
Yeah, I would have to go back and look at the cumulative total over the years. I mean, again, we've been leasing it since 1990.
If somebody could maybe find that later, later for tonight, that'd be great. I'll keep looking. Thank you.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Okane, I think you, you touched on this. I just want to be clear. So nothing is being asked of council tonight regarding the relocation of Palo Verde and Hoover. That, that's really being treated more of a, again, informational report?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And you also touched on this, I try to want to get a little more, a little better understanding, a little more detail on, you said the district has expressed some interest in acquiring land at the Ventura Community Center? Is that what you said, or can you go, expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So in our initial conversations of where could, where does a city have land that the school district could, may be interested in? We identified Ventura as being one of those. And actually, in the, I believe it was a purchase agreement. When we purchased that, when the city purchased that from the school district, in the agreement, it included giving the school district first right of refusal to, to buy it back. So that's sort of why we went there as a first discussion point. The acreage is a little less than seven acres. Actually, it's a few acres less than seven. I don't know if they still have interest there, or what that would look like. But we've talked about what all the, what the uses are at Ventura right now, and how we would need to, you know, find a home for whoever is there now. We went through all the different, you know, sort of scenarios. There's a community guard in there. What would happen to those? So again, it's very preliminary. I'm not sure if the school district is, has an interest in Ventura at this time, or would in the future, but it was just a point of discussion.
Okay, when you say point of discussion, you mean more internal discussion among city staff and not in collaboration with the school district at this point?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we did talk with the school district about it.
Okay, recently.
I would say within the last year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Maybe a month. I'm not sure.
Yeah, don't worry. Yeah, so can you correct me if I'm wrong? I, I thought I remember that this conversation had come up in the past with the school district on Ventura Community Center. They essentially said that it was, that it wasn't adequate, at least the size of the, of the property for, for a school. Did, did that happen, or am I just mistaken on that?
So part of that issue with a building like Ventura and Coverley, honestly, is that they have to, and I'm speaking from what I've learned, not as an expert in this, but that to house these buildings for students require a significant more work. They have DSA requirements they need to meet for capital improvements that go well above what one might need to do to put like an adult school there, or, you know, a different purpose. So I think looking into it further, they're, they're going to need to weigh whether they want to pursue those sort of advanced, higher-level improvements to, to do something like that. So you're correct. Those, the buildings, both Ventura and Coverley, are old and need improvement. And to put kids in them as a school would need even more improvements.
And then just kind of follow, final follow-up on this. Are there any, is there any city-owned property that is on a shortlist beyond Ventura Community Center that we think would be of interest to the district?
We looked at, or we just talked briefly about the Greer, is it Greer?
I'm Greer.
I know your Greer. Greer Road, no.
Road, right. I think.
Gang Road, I'm sorry, Gang Road.
Thank you, thank you.
That, because there was an interest potentially in having a, a place for them to park their buses. But that didn't seem like it would be feasible. There was, you know, we looked at potentially an area by Termon School that is actually dedicated parkland. It's not, I'm sorry, it's not called Termon anymore, but it's Termon Park. It's not Termon School. But it's interesting how the fields there are actually dedicated parkland and not part of the school. And so we looked at, well, is there a need there? But again, words, the discussion is so preliminary that nothing has gone beyond. Let's all look at a map together and see what might fit into this situation. And so far, nothing really is a good fit, honestly.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. I'll just go in the order of the three topics. And the first is, I do not have my reading glasses on, so I can't see anymore. How much do we think it'll cost to do the CEQA analysis if we continue with it?
Well, the CEQA analysis is, it's completely funded.
Right, but how much?
It's, it was close to, I want to say 150,000.
Okay, that's fine. Ballpark's good. And I didn't really follow your answer to Councilmember Phil Seth. If, if we, if, let's just hypothetically assume that the beautiful plan will never come to fruition, how useful would it be for us to still go ahead and certify the plan?
Can I help with that?
Certainly.
So regardless of whether you set aside the work now, or continue it and certify it, if projects, discretionary projects are not approved immediately, but time passes, the issue is the same, which is that new impacts that may occur because of changed circumstances will need to be further studied. And it's just a question of whether that's done as part of picking up an EIR that had some work done on it, but still needs to get to the completion stage, or whether it's done as a supplemental to an EIR that was completed and certified. So it's, it's the passage of time until a project is actually approved, and then looking at whether the potential impacts of that project were adequately studied by the work that was done, or need to be added to.
Thank you. That's helpful. And how would staff characterize the quality of the current city-owned space at Coverley?
It's old and dated, and yes, it needs improvement.
Sure. Okay. The next question is on the relocation of the school, so potentially for Mr. Cami. As I think about the, the direction from Palo Verde to Greendale, I'm also mindful of the fact that Charleston-Arastodero is literally under construction as we speak. And just, can you, can you give us some assurances that those will be well-coordinated, and we won't have elementary school students trying to cross through construction on Charleston?
Yeah, well, actually, specifically, the construction is, is something that Public Works is, is managing right now. But I, I do know that we are working to coordinate, to make sure that there's not any impacts that are occurring at the same time.
Okay.
I also want to note that, you know, the Hoover, you know, redesign or construction is actually going to require us to change some of those recently installed areas.
Hopefully, you won't have to move any of the art, too. Any thoughts?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Cormac, if I could ask Mr. Cami also to note the, we'll say the plan for how the new traffic signal will support the change in traffic patterns?
Yeah, so the new traffic signal that's on Montrose is planned to be installed this summer, ahead of the relocation.
Okay. Any thought of using a shuttle?
Well, I would say that's kind of a, I guess, a question for the school district potentially, is to whether they'd want to use a shuttle, although we do hope that we'll have our on-demand shuttle up and running sometime in the fall.
Okay, great. And then my final question is potentially for City Attorney. You know, we've certainly gotten some emails about it. If, if council were going to want to put Coverley on the capital infrastructure plan, is that an action that we could take this evening?
Ooh, let me just quick-check the agenda item. I don't think so, but I think you could certainly direct the staff to come back with a, whatever that item is for.
Referral to finance or something.
Right. Or is it, is it actually a budget action? Or is it more of a list that's kept kind of parallel to the budget?
The imaginary list that's always at the end of the budget?
Unfunded?
Yes.
Projects? Yeah, it depends on the direction that the council would like to take with it. Certainly, that would not be a budgetary action, but would appropriately be a referral to Seth.
Thanks so much.
Vice Mayor Koo.
I'm just curious, and the environmental report, if it's ordered, it'd be base, it'll be reviewing the entire concept plan that is in place now, right, that was approved. But if the school district is not going to go forward with theirs, it would still have evaluated theirs, too.
That's right. With that, one exception is the, there's a piece that was left out because there's a piece that was left out because it um was, um, I'm trying to think of the word and maybe Molly, you can help me, but um, and, and that piece was the school. So because it was so far out that a school would be built, um, that it wasn't included in the overall analysis.
And so um the plan that we have right now does not include the housing.
The plan that we have right now includes different scenarios, which would be housing at five twenty-five San Antonio um as well as housing at Coverley.
Okay, um, that's, that's just very interesting because that's not, not something that's going to take place, yet we're still evaluating it.
Right.
Is there any pros and cons to that? Ms. Stone?
Well, I think the primary con as a policy matter would be if that's just um not a fruitful use of time and energy and funds. Um, Ms. Okine may have additional thoughts on that. Um, the, the pros for finishing the EIR would be you would have it in place. And to the extent that there were any piece of the master plan that was studied that was wanting to move forward as a project, you would have that EIR piece completed. But it, it's not necessarily very difficult to then pick up the, the work that's been set aside and finish it according to current conditions. You know, in conjunction with doing a project in the future when you're at the point of wanting to actually define something.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so the, um, I'm looking at the staff report. It says that the amendment for development of the Sequo document is not to exceed amount of hundred seventy thousand four hundred ninety-seven. Did the school also pay, did the school district also have contributions towards that amount?
They did. They had, um, they contributed fifty thousand. So in the original agreement that, the cost sharing agreement we had with them, it said the amount that we would spend on a sequo consult would not exceed a hundred thousand and that they would pay half of that. So we actually came back to council to amend the consultant's scope and that cost went directly to the city because it would have been too labor intensive to, um, you know, amend a cost sharing agreement for that amount of money.
Okay, very good. Thank you for reminding us.
Sure. There's a lot of pieces and a lot of history here.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions as well. So one of the items is that on page four of the staff report, uh, there was discussion that um with the uh reconfiguration of the Greendale site, the um adult ed program that is currently housed at Greendale would be moved to building number one of the uh school district managed portion of the Coverley site. Would that displace any tenants that moved over to school district, PAUSD management when we relinquished half of that Coverley area? And if so, do we know who those are?
And so that's, that's building I, um, which is the two story building in the middle of the campus. Um, I don't believe we moved, I don't believe anyone, any tenants moved to building I because at the time the school district was considering using the space. And then um, I believe they didn't do that. But either Sarah or maybe um Mr. Holm, if you know the answer to that.
I, I can chime in. This is Eric Holm, Director of Facilities for PAUSD.
Thank you.
Uh, the building is currently vacant.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And then on page two of the staff report, there's a reference to the one point eight million and change that we um had at one time been paying to the district, as I recall it, as a not to compete, or excuse me, uh, not to develop covenant that back in twenty eleven or twelve or so. We renegotiated that with the district and uh put it into a a fund for major maintenance of Coverley that had never had a fund before. So we have over one point eight million dollars a year there. How many dollars are in that fund currently and what plans do we have for major maintenance on our portion of the Coverley site?
Sure, so um, I will, if um Director Eggleston is on, I would ask him to chime in on that balance. I know there's um roof replacement work being done right now on the city's property. Um, if you know the, the balance, Brad, that would be helpful.
Uh, Brad Eggleston, Director of Public Works. I'm afraid I, I don't have that handy. Uh, I think in most years we haven't uh spent the, the full one point eight million. So my recollection is that there is some built up amount. Uh, really, the type of maintenance we're doing is just to keep things running there. So as Director Okine said, we got an ongoing program of replacing roofs that are at or past the end of their useful lives. We recently replaced artificial turf and redid the track. We do have a project to install a new uh park restroom to serve the fields there. Uh, I think there's some pay, there's some parking lot improvements, kind of minor uh that, that are being considered in the upcoming uh year's budget. And let's see, that's probably mainly it. Uh, other than some ongoing uh repair funding that's just kind of used for uh things that tend to come up, like replacing boilers, emergency repairs, those sorts of things.
Thank you. And Director Eggleston, while we hear from the public, if you might be able to pull up, uh, locate the amount of dollars that are in that fund, that would be helpful. Then lastly, Director Okine, you mentioned um amongst the different land trades that we would consider with the district. Uh, I had forgotten that this part of the, what is now the um, what was formerly the Termon School and uh what you were referring to as the Termon Parkland is actually city owned. So have there been discussions with the district about that? It seems like uh if we're swapping PAUSD land that the city is using for um city owned land that PAUSD is using, that might have a natural synergy.
Um, thank you. So my, I did lose you for a minute, but I think I did get your question. Um, so the, the term in parkland is actually dedicated parkland. Can you hear me okay? Because you're all frozen on my end.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you. Um, so it's actually dedicated parkland there. So if we were to do that, we would really need to look at um possibly unded- dedicating it, which would require a vote of the people, which would be um an effort in and of itself to do. And, you know, we would have to decide if that's a direction we would want to go. But um the way that um school is now, it's pretty landlocked. Um, and they don't have a lot of lawn space or field space, honestly, for their own school uses. So while it does seem like a really good um trade, um, we would have to look at that, those, the legal pieces around undedicating that.
Okay. And do you know the acreage of that land?
Um, I believe it's less than seven acres. I want to say it's maybe three or four. I have it um here. I can look it up quickly.
Okay.
Any other questions while I?
And you can let us know that later if that's easier.
Okay. Kind of the administrative services, if I might, uh, at your pleasure, answer one of your questions. Um, the balance in the capital infrastructure fund for Coverley specifically has about two point four million in unallocated funds. Um, and at present, the twenty twenty-two budget presumes primarily an investment in roof replacements um with some additional investment in just general repair, as Director Eggleston said, as well as the restroom.
Thank you.
And I also have the acreage for the Termon Park is seven point seven acres.
I'm sorry, how many?
Seven point seven.
Oh, okay.
More than I thought.
Yeah. Um, so that looks like that concludes Councilmember questions. So we can now go to members of the public who wish to speak on this item. And our first speaker is Ken Horowitz, to be followed by Phil Mast. Welcome, Mr. Horowitz.
The relationship between the PAUSD and the city council is the best definition of insanity that I've ever uh heard about. And uh, I've been following this, these events over the last thirty years. When Foothill, I taught there for a number of years, I taught at the Coverley campus. And then Foothill was, was interested and we passed a forty million dollar bond, which we tried to buy the city's eight acres, but we were blocked by Palo Alto Unified School District. Um, it's time for a community center. You own eight acres. You can do a lot with eight, eight acres. Uh, you can not only go sideways, um, but you can also go up with eight acres. Um, and eight acres will be less expensive than trying to buy another seven acres, which who knows with this Palo Alto Unified School District, what their ultimate plans will be. And there's a lot of strings attached for you to buy seven acres. Then you're going to have to sell something. It's so, so complicated. It's time to move on. And one of the recommendations, which wasn't presented, but it's a draft motion, is to pause the Coverley concept, concept plan right now. Let's develop the eight acres that you have. Uh, sadly, it would have been great to work with Palo Alto Unified School District, but they're just not as good a neighbor as you would like them to be. And sometimes you have neighbors that don't agree and you have to move on. So I'm hopeful that you can move on. There is a wild card here that you're going to hear about next month, and that's a twenty million, twenty-five million dollar gift that a philanthropist might want to uh spend on a city gym. So there's so many unknowns. So my recommendation for you would be to um pause the Coverley concept plan, number one. Forget about any acquisition of new land or trade. And let's get a first class community center in the eight acres. In preparation for tonight, I went back and reviewed the um council and the school board when you were running for election back in two thousand and twenty. Um, and so you should go back and read and look at what you said then, Mayor Burt and Councilmember Stone, and it's time to move on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Phil Mast, to be followed by Liz. Welcome, Mr. Mast.
Okay, unmuted is, can you hear me okay now?
We can.
Okay. My question is if the city purchases Coverley land from the school district, does this mean that the city and PUSD will not be sharing any future buildings that are built at Coverley? As a taxpayer supports both the city and PAUSD, it doesn't make sense to me to build one set of buildings such as gymnasiums and a theater that are used by PAUSD mostly during school hours. And then a few feet away, building another set that are used by the city mostly on evenings and weekends. Other nearby cities have been able to build and share facilities. It seems that significant taxpayer savings would result from the city and PUSD cooperating to share space at Coverley. As Christian mentioned, a couple of years ago, the city and PAUSD worked with Concordia to develop plans for building and sharing facilities at Coverley. As an alternative to an outright purchase of PUSD land or swapping land with PUSD for Coverley, is it possible to present taxpayers with one or more bond issues that A, provide funds for the new buildings? And B, provides PAUSD with a solid stream of income for buildings that are built on its land? A significant amount of community effort went into the Concordia plan. It's hard for me to imagine what a future Coverley would look like if the city and PUSD don't cooperate on its development. But it doesn't seem that it would be as near as good as what we came up when we were working with Concordia. I'm not sure how the bond issues need to be structured, but I personally support a set of one or more bond issues that include one, a Concordia like vision for the overall development of the property, including building uh buildings on both city and PAUSD land. eventual share, two, eventual sharing of facilities between the city of PUSD. And three, significant compensation to PAUSD for the city's use of its land. And I prefer this approach to an outright purchase or land swap of PUSD land. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz, to be followed by Peter Giles. Welcome.
Hi, Liz Gardner. Yes, um, I really support working together with PAUSD and the city of Palo Alto. I know it's been a long history of division. Uh, maybe it's based back in, you know, Proposition thirteen funding and taxpayers bases and so forth. But um having been part of the Concordia um presentations, I happened to bring six children um who came to present um the idea of um just cooperation and incorporating such things as a new skateboard park and um so forth. But um I just really want to support working together, especially in these times of COVID and our economic and housing crisis that we work together with the powers that be, especially with uh how Stanford has worked with um Pally and the school district on their property. Um, let's use this as an opportunity of cooperation. Um, but uh, other than that, I did want to speak to a couple of different things. One is the surface parking lot off of Middlefield. Um, it's terrible, at least up to a couple of years ago that I was utilizing it. Um, you know, con- loose concrete, very unsafe, um dips and potholes. And, you know, quick fixes. I, I know that's probably hundreds of thousands of dollars, but that definitely needs to be improved um as well. Um, the traffic, the, the automobile traffic on Middlefield is problematic. We have, uh, we, we not only have uh Keys pu- uh private school, we have Challenger, we have um the ballpark, and then we have the library and then um Piazza. So um especially around um school letting out, it, it gets very impacted there. And I just want to be wary. Somebody was bringing up Safe Roots to School. They're awesome. They're an incredible resource. You know, are they going to be possibly having to retool another map for safe routes along that, um especially during those hours between, I would say, three and six? For, for schools letting out, getting into libraries, going to Piazas, you know, going to the ballpark, going to, you know, there's even a church and a fire station there. So it's quite impacted right now with a lot of in and out along that road. Um, other than that, I hope to see the city and, and the school district work together on this great vision for a campus for everybody in the city of Palo. Long time waiting. If you want to, I'm just going to go over a little bit here. Um, look at the history of Addison and Mayfield School. Um, Addison had to go to Mayfield School in nineteen sixty-eight for a, um, they, they did a redo on their campus and then um just a little bit of history.
Thank you. Out of fairness to others, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, our next speaker is Peter Giles, to be followed by our final speaker, Penny Elson. Welcome.
I, I'm Peter Giles. I've lived in this, in South, in South Palo Alto here for since nineteen seventy. I live on East Meadow. I come at Coverley twice a week. My, my wife graduated from Coverley. I mean, we're very familiar and have a lot of affection for this site is, and it's painful to see it. You know, go un-realized in its potential. I, I would just like to speak up. There's been some good points made today, and I, I appreciate the council with all you've got on your pressing plates to take this up. But it is a strategic transformative opportunity for the city of Palo Alto and for the south part in particular, but for the entire city. So I hope you'll take a, a next positive step. I don't know exactly what that is. I, I don't have the level of detail and the understanding. I did not participate. I was not here during the Concordia process, process, a lot of it. But I'm back in this area. I've reviewed that concept plan. I think it's a good product. I think it's a good process. I realize it may be outdated. It may be complex in implementing, but it is worth it because the magnitude and scope of it and the potential benefit are extremely significant. And so it's worth it. It's worth the price to make a cooperative arrangement with the school district and push forward on this. And uh, I, I hope you'll do that. I hope you'll put it this project of moving forward in the capital improvement plan that you have for the city so that it has more consistent formal visibility. Delighted to hear there's a cumulative fund in your maintenance fund. Maybe you'll consider also improving the tennis courts where I play twice a week and they're very much beyond their useful life. Uh, they're still useful, but they're pretty, they're in pretty bad shape. Anyway, you've got so many needs on that. I, I, I feel like there's such an opportunity here. And uh, I do hope you will uh, you know, you'll, you'll move forward in some way, taking that plan that you have and the process that was so effort, so much effort went into and of all ages and all backgrounds in the community and really turn this into something. So uh, and to take a next step, I'll certainly be willing to put energy. I know the friends of Coverley that I participate in is very much interested in helping in any way we can. Thank you for taking this up and being, uh, having some serious discussion about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Penny Elson. Welcome.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. I'm Penny Elson, speaking as an individual. The city has upzoned areas of South Palo Alto and the state has passed legislation to encourage higher density, housing density. Small, high-density housing units are coming. Smaller units have less space for recreation and so are much more dependent on community services than single-family homes. And that density is going to begin appearing in South Palo Alto right near Coverley, starting with Eden Housing very soon, one block away. Small units have less space for recreation. We need to make sure we have resources to support these new residents to maintain the wonderful balance of community and public school resources our city offers all residents. Some questions I hope you'll consider in your decision-making tonight. First, as the school district works on plans to move Palo Verde and Hoover and possibly other schools in the future to Coverley and Greendale during their bond measure construction, how will nearby city street systems support that intensified use? What changes might be necessary to ensure safe routes are in place for children who walk and bike to this new location? Or to improve bike ped access to existing and future Coverley community services for people of all ages and disabilities? Using the Safe Roots to School partnership model would be useful. The city and school district represent overlapping constituencies. Please, work together. We know from experience, this can be very, a very successful model. PAUSD, as you know, is contemplating selling seven of their twenty-seven acres. A question might be, who, who can, who might buy it? Can PAUSD consider another buyer? So I would just ask you to please consider, you know, how much control you want to have over that land. And finally, regarding environmental review, I'm really appreciate the good questions that have been asked by council members this evening. I, I really wanted to hear some clarification like you of how the current CEQA process might be adapted for a later changed project and how it might inform traffic planning for PAUSD's current planned use. So what I'm getting from this, I just want to encourage you to consider how you might use the existing environmental review creatively if you move it forward. The school district has only committed to a temporary use for their portion of Coverley, but long-term need for community services and school capacity is at Coverley as we add new housing is clear. Please, plan forward. In thirty years, our city population and demand for this space will be greater than ever. We need Coverley. Please get it working again. It is dirty, unkempt, unpainted, and poorly organized for its current use. Feels abandoned, unloved, and neglected. City Council citizens entered the Coverley co-designing process with hope, but we left it feeling unheard. Please make that right. Let's get Coverley working again as a place for people to meet, to exercise their minds and bodies, to express themselves creatively, sharing projects, ideas, play, and friendships. Coverley is a place that has offered freedom to recreate creatively and often noisily. It is a place we need in our high-pressure Silicon Valley culture for structured and unstructured self-expression. Please bring Coverley back to life. Thank you for considering comments.
Thank you. Uh, so that concludes our public comments. And before returning to the council for discussion, I realize that members of the public and perhaps members of the council would benefit from a little more explanation on what the PAUSD position was and the rationale for uh, not seeing it as appropriate from their interest to go forward with any collaborative development of the site. So I'm not sure who is most familiar with uh, their, what their position was and, and can clarify that.
I could maybe speak to it.
Okay. Councilmember DuBois.
So I mean, we had a Coverley ad hoc all of last year with uh, Councilmember Cormac, Councilmember Koo, two school board members. And uh, you know, I think one of the public speakers kind of hit on it. I think there's been a real shift in looking at this as a shared opportunity. And um, we signed a compact back in twenty nineteen with the then superintendent or city manager to really look at shared facilities and go into that planning process. Uh, but unfortunately, I think the, the uh, current superintendent does not share that same attitude towards Coverley. And so we had really pretty much reached an impasse. And one of the things the ad hoc was recommending was potentially a joint school board and city council meeting to really, before we uh, go too much further, really decide, are we going to do anything as kind of a shared public agencies with an interest in supporting the community? Or are we really going to go kind of on a hands-off, uh, arms-length negotiation kind of approach?
So my understanding was that not just that they didn't elect to, but that they articulated a position, whether we agree with it or, or like it or not. Uh, and that position was that their use of that area as a school site is now with the change in the school population and the reversal of the pressure to provide additional school sites that it's so far down the road prospectively from them that they can't justify in their own minds, uh, investing in that for what for them is an uncertain purpose. Is that what they had articulated?
I would, I would say no. And again, I think part of the, there was definitely a, a split between the two school board members, I would say. And it's not clear where the majority of the school board is or where the majority of the council is, so.
Okay. All right. Um, so now back to the council for uh, discussion in response to the staff recommendations that we provide directions on advancement of the concept plan, uh, including whether to complete the uh, EIR. Uh, and then any feedback on the temporary location of Palo Verde and Hoover to Coverley and potential opportunity for acquisition of additional land at Coverley. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. It'll be a challenge to get through all of that in five minutes, but I'll, I'll give it a shot. Um, maybe we'll have a second round. Um. So five years ago, I started going to the city school liaison meetings and I'm, I'm a pretty optimistic person by nature. But five years later, I'm, I'm also a realist and I am now officially on hashtag Team Go It Alone. Um, and this is, this is related to the Coverley Concept Plan. I really wish we could do something wonderful there. That's a shared space that works for the entire community. But I've been sort of banging my head against this for five years and I know that others have done that for much longer before that. Um, and you know, the, the state of that, of that facility. We heard words dirty in our emails. We had dilapidated, decayed, degraded. I don't, I don't know how many more adjectives we need that start with D for us to do something about it. I'm really sympathetic to the speakers who want shared use and that's what I want as well. But I just think it's our responsibility to move forward at this point. And so I'm, I'm not going to be in favor of us doing the environmental analysis on a plan that the school district who owns most of the land says is not going to happen. You know, so that brings us to what would be next and I'll just spend a moment on that. Also, I don't see my timer. Oh, there it is. The left one. The right one is not. Okay, got it. The reality is, you know, whether we have seven acres or seven plus seven, um, fourteen, we still won't have enough space for everything that was in that community plan that we all wanted. Because that was kind of an amazing, just about any activity that people wanted was able to be accommodated on that plan. So I think we're going to have to, I, I wouldn't say necessarily start over, but we're going to have to do a pretty hard sort on what can fit in there. And you know, I'll just, you know, one of the elephants in the room is, will we have room for a gym and a theater? Right? That takes up a lot of space, plus all the things that are already there, like the Friends of Palo Alto Library we heard from today, childcare centers, um, all the people who dance and sing. I, I won't go on and on about all the things that are there. So that's where I am on the Coverley Concept Plan. In terms of the temporary relocation of the schools, I appreciate all the information that's been provided tonight. And you know, I expect the city to work collaboratively with the schools and make that work. And we'll be incredibly attuned to, you know, the safety of all those kids on bikes and who's going to park where. With respect um, to the land acquisition opportunity, um, I'm very interested in that. Um, that, you know, we actually, we actually got huge movement from the school district in terms of the board saying they would be willing um, to sell some land or give it or trade it. Up until that moment, the entire time we've been, where I've been working on this, the school district had said they would never consider selling land. So I don't know that we're going to get much more than the seven that we could potentially get. I think we should plan for fourteen acres, see what's possible, and then we're going to have to figure out how to fund it. You know, uh, one of our, um, Ms. Ms. Elson, when she wrote in, she described Coverley as a closet. And over the weekend, I was like, what is the metaphor I'm going to use? And, and I, I said that Coverley has really become a community attic. We put things up there that are broken. It's hard to get there, but it's also a place for imagination. But we need to go in and clean out that attic and, and shore it up. You know, it's not unlike the Roth building. It's a responsibility we have that, that we just haven't stepped up and done. And I really question what message we're sending our kids and our seniors when we let them, you know, do the things they love the most and spend most or part of their day in a place that really isn't, it just is not up to our standards. So that's where I am on that. And um, in the event that we don't do any sort of official referral on the capital infrastructure plan tonight, I'd be very interested in doing that with respect to design. And I doubt that we have to start over, but we have to narrow down. It's certainly something that I'll, I'll contemplate bringing forward when we have the, the second part of our retreat that is referrals to standing committees. So I'm not happy to be on Team Go It Alone, um, but I do think it's time. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Well, well, I pretty much agree with uh, Councilmember Cormac's remarks on this topic. Um, so I'll be really terse on, on the two topics on the environmental analysis. I haven't, uh, I haven't heard, I, I haven't heard what seems to be a compelling reason to continue the environmental analysis at this time. It doesn't seem like, like there's a lot of downside to waiting on that. And I think we could put the money to work somewhere more productive in the near term. Uh, it is one-time money, but we have plenty of one-time projects ahead of us that we could use it for. Uh, second on the land. You know, anytime that land becomes available in Palo Alto, there's so little of it available. Uh, and especially PF Zone land, which I assume this is, uh, you know, I think we have a look at it seriously. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm also have to agree with Councilmember Cormac, Councilmember Phil Seth, even though I wish it wasn't so. And I do think so much depends on the people and the roles at the time. So again, you know, it was just a couple of years ago, we had this agreement to move forward with the collaborative design process. Um, and I'm disappointed in the waste of funds and time and really community outreach. Because I think the, the output of that process was very good. And uh, so you know, I'm a little bit torn. I mean, people could change. We could be moving forward. But the school district has really kind of sat on this land for a long time. And you know, I was asking how much we spent in rent total. I think, can, uh, Kristen, do we, we spend like five million a year, six million with the school district?
Prior to renegotiating the lease, a couple of years ago, I was five point eight million a year.
Right.
Prior to that, it was closer to three million a year, back to nineteen ninety. And then now we're back to like two point seven million.
Yeah. So it's, it's well over a hundred million, I think, over thirty years, if probably a hundred and fifty million, which Palo Alto, that's about fifteen acres of land, if it was a hundred and fifty million. And um, you know, and again, I think it's worth talking a little bit about our history. I mean, the school district and the city have a history of working together. A lot of these payments were to help the school district in a time of crisis. And um, you know, I would say that I, I, we have done joint school board, city council meetings. I think it's been many years. It might be good just to do a session. Not just on Coverley, but in general. And uh, to get to some of the items in the staff report, I agree. I don't, I don't see why would we proceed with the CEQA when we don't have a defined timeline for moving forward. On the temporary schools, um, I would really like to understand any impacts on our shared uses, uh, common spaces and whether we should be asking for any kind of rent reduction if, if there are a lot more people that are using it for the schools. You know, is our use going to be impacted as a city? I know the staff report said there'd be no change in rent. But has that been discussed at all?
Sarah, are you there? Um, so, well, I'll weigh in on, oh, go ahead.
No, can you repeat the question?
Uh, again, if, if the schools are temporarily going to be there and some of the common areas are going to be more heavily used, it won't be thought. Uh, what was the discussion around adjusting the rent? For example, you know, uses of the parking lots and that kind of thing.
I don't, we haven't discussed adjusting the rent. And because I, I think that the thought is that there should be ample enough parking to accommodate the relocation to Greendale, but I can also defer to Eric on this one.
That's okay. I'm going to run out of time, but thank you. On the land purchase, uh, again, I, I do believe we should explore that. You know, I do think we should revisit again our shared obligations to the community. And um, again, how much we've supported the school district over the years. Uh, I don't really think, it's kind of a long-winded way to say. Uh, I don't really think it's kind of a long-winded way to say. I don't think the school district should expect a market rate deal. Um, the city and the school district have never really operated in that fashion. Um, and so I think we should come up to an agreement upfront about what kind of valuation method we would use if we were gonna pur- purchase some more land. Uh, venture has come up. You know, I think we rent that for a dollar a year. That, that's much more in the spirit, I think, of. Of the way the city and the school district used to operate. Um, I really, we have a lot of childcare facilities in Ventura. Um. I don't really think that's a great candidate for a land swap. Um, but we have been, we have paid this covenant not to development for a number of years. Now we're paying it to a maintenance fund. Maybe we should explore if we could apply those funds to buying the land over time. Um. You know, and again, we may be paying that for a lo- long number of years, but. That may be a way that we could increase the land and really plan for a functional community center. So. That's where I am.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka.
And thank you, staff, for your guys' work on this. Um, so I have a three thoughts on this. So first one. And I said this many times, but I, I kind of see us and the school district, school district as one and the same. We may be separate. Organization that have some separate elected leaders. But at the end, it's just, it's a taxpayer start paying and we, we have largely the same, um, tax, tax, tax base. And I think a lot of people, including myself, we moved here for the schools, for great schools. So I think we want to have great schools. We want to be supportive of the schools. So I, you know, generally, as you guys probably know, I'm really into optimizing deals, right? Trying to get the best deal possible for the city. But in this case, because it's, it's essentially our sister organization, I don't feel like we need to. Have it so optimized. In fact, I, I, I think it's okay to be generous to our schools and it's okay to. To have payments to them to help support their operations. Um, I, I think it's something which. Most members of, of the community would want to happen. So I don't quite see it. The same as like a vendor or some other third-party entity. I really see it as ones where we, we should work together. Um, and it's okay if we pay more and don't get as much. I'm, I'm okay with that because it's the school district. Um, I wouldn't be the same if it was some other organization, but for school district, I think it's okay. Because it, we, we largely have the same constituency. Um, the second point is in terms of land acquisition. So I. Um. I, 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 I used to be really into the city acquiring land because land's so scarce and it generally is very, very valuable for us to do so. But, um. You know, as I've kind of been on council for, for a bit now. You know, we on council or we as a city really do not. Monetize our land, right? We largely. You know, rent it out at one dollar, you know, for five years or something ridiculous like that. We don't really monetize it. And it's not like Melville. Melville makes a ton of money. I think it's actually one of the largest revenue sources is leasing of land. But for us, it's, it's negligible because we do it for other reasons. We do it for. For nonprofits, we do it for uses that we want to senior say, but we don't use it to actually monetize. And so I, I'm less excited about us. Just trying to acquire land for the sake of acquiring land, mainly because we, in terms of use of capital, we're not very good at using capital. If we use the, use it to actually buy land and actually monetize land at market rates. Then that's one story. If we were, if we're deploying a strategy like Melville, then, then that would be great, but I don't know if. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm really into that, but I'm not sure that everyone else is. So, and, and because of that. I don't, I don't think we should just acquire land because I don't think the city allocates, is really good at allocating capital. When it comes, it comes to acquiring land, right? We'll buy, we'll buy things like the Roth building. It would sit on for like twenty years, something. Something really long like that and not really use it. So. I don't, especially right now, given our budget situation, I don't think we want to be, um. We want to be spending our, our scarce capital on, on things like this. Now, if it's, if it's a land swap, you know, it makes our parcels more contiguous and, you know, easier to plan. Or things like that. Yeah, maybe we should look at it, but just to acquire land for the sake of acquiring land, I think is not good because we. And not unless I, I would only be supportive if we suddenly had the policy of, well, we're gonna start being like Melville and we're gonna try to really develop this revenue source of. Leasing land at market rates and trying to make that a, you know, another revenue source for our city. And, and then if, if so, then I'm, I'm really, you know, into that. Um, okay, so third, third part here is in regards to the, uh. The proposed motion in terms of do we kind of pause things or do we proceed? And to me, it seems like we need to pause things, uh, for all the reasons that people have mentioned. Because, um, it seems like we're burning a lot of money and there's not a lot of, um. You know, we were a little bit. You know, I think we have to get agreement with the school district and I think that's a little bit hard to get at this point. So it, it seems like it's a little bit of a tough thing to do at this point in time. So. Um, I'm okay with the option two right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I find myself very, very much aligned with Councilmember Cormac on, on this issue. Um. I, I was looking through a lot of kind of historic record and, and trying to understand where the, where the parties have been. And I, I think the, the. Letter by our city manager and, and Don Austin, the trans-middle letter, and just to read an excerpt from it. Says, it said, "We are pleased to share with you the draft Coverley Concept Plan, a culmination of a year-long community co-design process that. Through open, honest, through open and honest dialogue, helped us to understand the community's needs, preferences, and differences." Then a little later in the letter, it says, "The Coverley Master Plan is a vision for the future that can only be realized by continuing the path forward." And I, I, I do think unfortunately, the only way of us being able to. Achieve that, that vision for the future i- is by. Moving forward o- on our own. And I, and that, and that saddens me to say, I think we all really wish that this was going to be a fruitful partnership and. It seemed like it began that way. Um, but that is, that, that has fallen apart and we're, and we have, uh, very different views. So I, I do agree. Um, I don't see, I, I don't see the point moving forward with the, with the SEQA review. I think, uh, the city attorney made a, a strong, very, a good point as far as. I, I don't, I don't think we want to go down that path. Commit the resources, the time, just to find that it's, um, that we then might have to redo, do that process and spend, uh, additional funds. On the, o- on the land acquisition opportunity, I'm, I'm open to that possibility. I think that is, uh, I think that's interesting. I think one thing that concerns me is that the staff report does say that it would take. Significant staff resources to advance forward the possibility of, of the city acquiring those seven additional acres. And I'm just concerned that we're gonna continue to make. The same mistake here, that we're gonna go down this path. We're going to spend those significant, those significant resources. And just find ourselves at another point where the district is gonna kind of pull out, get cold feet. And not want to, uh, move forward. And so it just kind of reminds me of, of the proverb. Uh, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. Um, I hope I got that better than the former president. Uh, but, you know, that, I, I think that, um. Yeah, that's sort of where I'm, where I'm at there. Yeah, I, I'm interested. I do think we need to get some initial commitment. Uh, from the district that they're really willing to play ball before we, before we, uh, continue to pursue that. But all, all that being said, having a community center in South Palo Alto and in particular at, at Coverley. Is a, a real critical goal. I, 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 I live in South Palo Alto. I know many residents in South Palo Alto. Have been frustrated for a very long time of the lack of community resources that we have down there and, uh. The, the feeling that much of our, mu- much of our kind of community services. Are located in other parts of the city and not in, and not in the southern part of, of town. Um, and so to, to show our commitment to South Palo Alto and the entire community that we're very serious with this. Community center, I think it's absolutely important that we continue to, uh, to move forward, uh, on our own, as Councilmember Cormac suggested. I am curious, does, does staff have thoughts on i- if we were, if we were to not pursue trying to acquire those seven additional acres? Do we, i- is eight acres sufficient to be able to have a community center that's gonna be able to? And it's not gonna be able to meet the, the laundry list of desires that our city has, but. Is that sufficient for a community center that will, for the most part, fit our needs?
Yeah. So that's a great question. I think it would fit a lot of our needs. Um, if you look at the co-design. Or the concept plan, it does have a gym, which is a critical need. Um. It has the community center space and it has a pool. What it lacks is the theater. It lacks the second gym and the performing, like a bigger performing arts, um, center and some other spaces. So I think we could fit a lot there, but I think there's other things that we would have to make a decision as to whether we want to, um. Just stop providing them in, um, that part of town, particularly, I think the theater, because it does take up so much space.
And then just as far as kind of, um. But my, my, so my understanding of our, of our eight acres, I apologize. I'm not sure if the mayor can ask this earlier or, um. But our eight acres. What, what we kind of see now where our eight acres are is, that's not. Is that, i- is that kind of concrete that those are our eight acres or is that more? Um, cause I understand that there's some kind of strange boundaries, but that's because of the existing buildings. And so if those existing buildings were gone. Do, does our, does sort of our portion change at all?
So our, was that a question for me?
Sure.
Okay. So our eight acres are pretty, are clearly defined. Um, it's not linear because when the. Property was subdivided, it had to go around existing buildings. So it is sort of a strange property line, but it is. Um, well-defined.
Okay. And I imagine that would have to be maybe. Modified to be able to create the community center that we, that we want.
I would anticipate so.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Koo.
So I align, um, my comments with a lot of what Councilmember Cormac, Phil Seth and, uh, DuBois has said, including Councilmember Stone. Um, I just want to have a question about. You named, um, Ms. O'Kane, you named some of the. Facilities that will be within the eight acres that belong to the city. Um, how about the cardiac, um, therapy program? Will that be still within the cities or? I just want to make sure because, you know, that's a very important facility for a lot of the seniors who are recovering from, uh, strokes and heart attacks and surgery and so forth. So. Want to make sure that the wellness center is there as well. Is that included?
Well, it's in the concept plan that was prepared in November. Um. So that gym would be more of like, like you said, a wellness center. That was our vision at the time. Um, they're currently. In a building that's on the school district's property, but. Um, we're continuing to lease that building from the school district so that that group can stay there.
So right now it's leads, right now. So, yeah, okay. Well, I, I guess, you know, when we're going out to develop and kind of start designing that. Facility on the eight acres, who, we do want to make sure that we, uh, include those, the seniors who are in recovery. Um, but you know. I also want to remind that, you know, the city is also, I know that there's that revenue generating part, you know, and so forth, right? With, with. Land that we have, but I do want to remind that, you know, there is a lot of organizations that. Pre- that provides huge benefits to our community, uh. Because we're able to subsidize their rent, because it is of, uh, a lower rent. So, um. Just to consider. Community benefits and making revenue on it and making a profit. I, I think there's, um. There needs to be more consideration on that simply because a lot of people won't be able to provide to Palo Alto residents. And to the community, some of the things that we do have here and people enjoy. Um. Yeah. So I think that's, that's. Everything else has already been said. So thank you.
Great. Um, so I have a few questions and comments. Uh, first, I agree with Councilmember DuBois that it would be productive. For us to have a joint meeting with the P A U S D board in the coming months, um. Uh, and over a variety of issues, including Coverley and, and other related matters. Um. As far as the idea of whether the, uh, the funds that were formerly in the covenant not to develop that are now in the major maintenance fund. Um, we've, we've heard that Coverley. Is in a dilapidated state in many regards right now. Those were the only dollars. It was. We didn't have that one point eight million a year for that until we created that fund. And reallocating it for land purchases would mean that we would have further deterioration of the current buildings. While we wait an indefinite period of time for when we might be able to acquire. Um. Uh, or, or excuse me, rebuild that land. Um. And I, I do want to, you know, respond to the relative conditions of, of what the. District can do and what we can do and what's happened in recent times. Um, you know, this goes back over a decade ago when, uh, Foothill DeAnza wanted to put a pilot campus there. And P A U S D believed at that time they were in a period of very strong. Uh, enrollment growth and they thought that they were going to need a full high school there. Uh, their mind had changed. It got dialed back to a, uh, uh. A continuation school and then looking at the, or, or some sort of a, uh, the special school. And then, uh, looking at the district offices and now they're really in a placeholder position. But what has happened in the last. Uh, year or two is P A U S D, which has a declining enrollment and, and increasing tax base. Is for the first time in forty years gone from. Uh, needing to watch their dollars when, certainly when the city bailed out the school district in the. Um, throughout the nineties and, and beyond, uh, to structural surpluses. And so they're in a very different situation now. It's a reversal of what had been. Kind of the, the fiscal relationships of the, the two different bodies. Um. But their focus also, they've made clear in their obligation on their bond dollars is to. Uh, for school purposes. And that's one of the dilemmas on, on Coverley is they can't rationalize spending those dollars. Uh, for purposes that are community purposes rather than school purposes. I do want to say that I think that what we can do at Coverley, as much as our buildings need to be. Uh, first renovated or, and ultimately replaced with a. Um. A contemporary community center at a tremendous cost, uh, when we ultimately do that. Um. But we're very limited by the land. We don't have really enough land to do everything we would like to do at Coverley. And I was hesitant on the Ventura site issue, although I'm open to it. Uh, Director O'Kane, were you able to figure out how many acres that is?
Oh, I apologize. Um, I will.
You know, I, I.
I believe it's four.
Yeah, that sounds about right. I was ballparking four to five. Um. But the, the land at the Fletcher Middle School that I had forgotten in that whole swap that happened, um, back when that was done is, um. We, as a city, still essentially said, well, this is dedicated parkland, but you can use it for your school playing fields. And they couldn't put a middle school there without us providing that land to the district. On other district playing fields, we have playing field agreements where we, we negotiate, uh, a limited use of their playing fields for community functions for youth and otherwise. Uh, this is an anomaly. And, um, I'm very intrigued by that. We have. Like I said before, we have public land, um, that, um. That is used by the district. It's, uh, that's city land at, at Fletcher. We have. Uh, P A U S D land at Coverley that's used by the city. And it seems like that kind of swap. Uh, has merit and I appreciate that it is dedicated parkland. Would need to go through that, but the voters have. Made those kinds of decisions in the past. We treasure retaining parkland. This is field parkland. It would stay. We could have a, a long-term covenant that it would stay in the exact same use and couldn't be converted, um, to anything else. Um, so I, I think that's at least well worth exploring. And, um. Let's see. Well, I, I have a couple of other things, but I'll wait, uh, and include them as we go around. Um. I don't know if any of my colleagues are ready to make any specific proposals, but. Who would like to go next as we're right now at seven thirty? Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah. So first, just clarification of what I was suggesting was. Basically, we grew to a mortgage with P A U S D that we'd get the land now, but pay them over a number of years. We'd still have the issue of maintenance agreed, but. Just trying to get creative to the point where we could. Get the land and really talk about funding construction. Um, I am. I gotta say, I am concerned about Ventura. We have a number of daycares there and if we move them out, we'd have to find another place. For them or lose a lot of daycare. In the cities. That seems like a no-win situation. I think the Fletcher land is interesting. Again. It would, uh, not, not my first idea to undedicate parkland, but go to the voters and perhaps that could work. Um. But again, if, if maybe it's not land, maybe it's just some kind of financial arrangement and. I think, again, before, I think Councilmember Stone said it pretty well. It's like. And I think, again, before, I think Councilmember Stone said it pretty well. It's like we need to have some kind of ground rules or some kind of commitment um, that we're just not wasting a bunch of time. So given all the comments, I'll attempt to make a motion, which would be um, one to go ahead and halt the CEQA process. Which would be, be there, I guess, if you just want to use the words you have. Delete A. And to um, go ahead and agendize a joint meeting uh, with the school board and the city council. Or a part of a meeting, maybe it's an hour or whatever. And um, and then ask staff to start exploring a framework for uh, property land acquisition from the school district.
Second.
So I think C probably needs the most discussion and fleshing out. Um, again, I I don't know if we could afford uh, eight, seven, eight, seven acres at market rates. But again, if there's some commitment around facilities that will be for youth as well as the whole community, maybe some payment over time. Uh, again, it is public facility land at limited uses. Uh, maybe we can get to some kind of agreement that we would be able to fund the purchase of the land.
Councilmember Cormac.
Uh, yes, thank you, and I'm hopeful that uh, Councilmember DuBois will consider a few amendments here as we go through. Um, perhaps we just um, take out the clause, second clause in A, just so there's no, it's just like, we're not doing it. Is that all right?
Uh, either way, I mean, when we do have a plan, we'll have to restart it.
Okay, well, maybe a while from now. Um, certainly fine with B. And I wonder if C um, could be slightly broader. What I was thinking is something along the lines of, you know, direct staff to return to council with a work plan um, to, that would include, one, exploring a land swap at Fletcher, uh, long-term financial arrangement for seven acres, and then two um, uh, designing uh, a Coverly Community Center. A redeveloped Coverly Community Center that is wholly city-owned. So being a little bit more specific with a work plan.
I don't want to limit it to a land swap only.
Okay, um, so yeah, that was an A, so um, I think I said exploring a land swap at Fletcher and long-term.
Or a financial framework for purchase.
Certainly. We'll wait while the clerk tries to catch up with us, making it up on the fly.
Yep, so after Fletcher, you just say, or a financial framework for a purchase, for purchasing the land.
Available land. And if, if we could put the um, to begin as a, as a C little i, then we can put D as a two I. I, I.
So I, I would not want to start the design until we know about the land. So it feels like that's really premature.
Um, well, I think the work plan should identify what, what it'll take to do that. Would we go back to Concordia? You know, how long?
Right, but are you suggesting we would start this before we know if we're gonna have, how much land we'd have?
Let's put then with a work plan to include up at the top of C. And then let's start, little I would be exploring. And then um, uh, C two would be to include um, scoping the design.
Process.
Sure.
Can we say, can we say once, once we have a commitment for land?
Well, I don't want to do that because it's possible that, you know, we'll be doing this in, in parallel. I mean, what I'd written down is like, we sort of need to think about a seven, eight acre, seven slash eight acre one. What is it exactly? It's seven point something, right? Director Okane, do you recall?
It is, it's, we always say eight, but it's not quite eight. It's like seven point eight or like 1.7.
Just to make it more confusing. Um.
So what is, what does staff think about this? I mean, it feels like this is the easy part. Once we knew we had the land, we could get the design process going, but.
Well, I laughed at the easy part, yes. I'm not sure anything's easy about this. That said, uh, I do suspect that before we can even scope a design process, we need to have some sense of the land we're working with. And quite frankly, I think that relates to B and the outcome of the path we might be on based on uh.
Okay, I'm happy to withdraw C two, but then I think perhaps Councilmember DuBois, you and I should put a timeframe on this.
Well, you can make it depend, dependent on determining the land. I just, I don't know how it would go in parallel, that's all.
Okay, so let's get rid of C two, where it says to include, oh, sorry. And it's back. Um. Subsequently, sorry, losing words already.
But just once, um, once the amount of total land is determined, scope the design process, something like that.
Sure, but you know what? Let's do it the other way. Say, um, scope the design process for a Coverly Community Center once the um, acreage is determined.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, sorry, thanks. Um, and let me just see if there was anything else. Um, I think if we do that, this will naturally make its way into the, the budget. Um, great, thank you.
Um, I don't see other hands. One small thing that I would recommend is under C one, rather than purchasing, it would be acquiring, because it may not be a purchase.
But that's fine.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor Koo.
Um, so did you give it a timeline on when the acreage is determined? Otherwise, it can, can it go on for too long? I mean, we still want to move forward and develop the eight acres and work on a project if we don't. So if there's a timeline, that would be nice. So that's for consideration, but the other thing is um, C little i, explore, exploring a land swap at Fletcher. You're talking about the school now, right? Cause um, and there's no land swap over there. It's the park.
Yes, that's what you mean by that. Only hesitation on a timeline is, does it work against us in a discussion? You know, it sets a timeframe, or if somebody's opposed, they just have to hold out that long.
Okay, um, okay. Okay. I, I just kind of look at it, and I'm wondering what the community's thinking, you know, um, in terms of how long will it be that they'll have to wait again? But as long as we're cognizant of that, I guess that's fine.
Perhaps we should put a timeframe on B, because that was really the gatekeep to C. I mean, it's hard to do that, right, but.
Well, we could, um, we, we can't unilaterally insist on the timeframe, but we could seek within a certain timeframe.
Okay. Before summer?
I think we should be able to do that.
Okay, so um, with Councilmember DuBois nod, um, yeah, prior to the, yeah, by the end of June, let's say. I'm not quite sure when the school district ends their meetings.
Before the June break.
Okay, uh, oh, Mr. City Manager, did you have something?
Yes, thank you. Uh, one question for clarification and one suggestion. You know, start with the suggestion. Instead of seek to agendize, is it request a joint meeting?
Yep.
Sure.
Thank you. And then on C little i, the financial framework, uh, for clarification, is that related to a land swap or independent?
Independent, it was meant to be independent. That's why I said purchase, if there are some financial payment terms or combination of things, whatever we can come up with creatively.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, and if that's the case, we can vote on the motion. The city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Mayor Burt.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Stone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, all right, that ends this item, and we um, next item is scheduled uh, to begin at eight. We can start a little bit early and um, take a break at this time. Uh, how many minutes would you like?
Twenty-nine.
So let's do a um, So let's do a let's do a 10 minute break. So we'll reconvene at seven fifty one approximately. And so I'm just going to start with some background information on our current agreement with Penn. So the city council approved a five year agreement in it was in late 2018 to start January 2019. The original contract termination date was January 17th, 2024. One of the clauses in that agreement was that either party could terminate without cause with one year written notice. And on November 15th, Penn exercised that right and provided the city with written notice that they would be terminating the agreement in 12 months' time. So that would be an expiration date of November 15th, 2022. Since that time, they appointed Ms. McCarthy as their interim executive director. And she and I have been having conversations here multiple times a week on not only how we can ensure a stable animal shelter operation through the through November 2022, but also how we might be able to have a new agreement that extends that for even longer and work collaboratively to do that. And Ms. McCarthy has also met with staff of the police department, the animal control officers, as well as public works director and assistant director. So that's kind of where what led us to come here today in trying to define where we might want to go in the future and get council's direction on how we would do that. So the current agreement, again, it's a five year term, but compensation to pin from the city was $3.4 million over the five year term with two contingency funds, including one that was for capital improvement renovation delays, which has been paid to Penn from the city. These capital improvements were just minor improvements to the existing kennels. Installation of a modular building and renovation of the medical suite. It also included construction of a new kennel building that would include 16 new kennels. And next slide, please. So just briefly on the capital improvement projects in the agreement from 2019, the total cost estimate for construction was $3.4 million. And you can see here the work that has been completed to date. So the medical suite design and construction, the modular building purchase and site prep and a new kennel building design. I wanted to point out that after the new kennel building was designed, the estimate for capital for the construction costs that were originally estimated, it actually increased by about $650,000, which exceeded the total capital expenditure that was identified in the agreement of 3.4 million. So we basically had a shortfall of $650,000 before we could get those new kennel buildings constructed. At the time, the executive director of Pets in Need and the city had some conversations and the executive director, Mr. Malika, had requested that we reprioritize that construction to instead renovate the existing kennels even further by using the available funding to do the upgrades and, you know, just improve the day to day conditions for the animals. So that design work was completed and that's the $89,000 you see here. And we were our public work staff were prepared to go to council in November to request a sole source exemption to purchase those kennels. And that's when we received the termination letter from Penn. So that item did not proceed with council. So to date, we have spent $1.8 million and the piece that has not been completed yet is the new kennel building construction. Next slide, please. So moving forward, and like I said, Valerie and I have been in lots of conversations on how we might be able to move forward. And what we've discovered in those conversations is that the city staff and Penn do have an interest in advancing an agreement on that would support a long term partnership built on collaboration and trust and also providing high quality animal care and accessible animal service, accessible animal services to residents of Palo Alto and our partner cities. Next slide. So in these conversations, Penn has prepared some proposed agreement terms. And Ms. McCarthy has presented these to the PIN board who has I guess offered their support for having continued conversations and negotiating these terms. So again, these are terms that PIN has developed. We have not gone into negotiations at all. This is just a starter conversation for what would need to happen for PIN to move forward. So one would be a longer term agreement, really demonstrating that both the city and PIN have a commitment to working together for the long term. Evaluation of an animal shelter database. So in the current agreement, it requires that we use chameleon software. PIN would like the opportunity to explore other software systems and potentially transition to a different one. I think our staff is open to that to just wanting to ensure that it's something that would be usable by the ACOs. And would be absolutely willing to have those conversations moving forward. The other is a feral cat plan. So the current agreement requires that PIN in collaboration with the city develop a plan for handling of feral cats. That work had been ongoing, had not been finalized. The agreement also says that PIN cannot release feral cats back into the wild or, you know, anywhere outside of the animal shelter. And they would like to restart those conversations and for us to think about how we could include a trap neuter release plan into the agreement. One that would avoid sensitive habitat areas like the baylands. And then finally, PIN has identified different sort of capital improvement projects that they would like to see advance. One of these is a different dog kennel design that would involve demolition of the existing kennel building and rebuilding a new one in its place. And then renovating and possibly expanding the small animal area. This is where cats mostly are housed, but other small animals as well. And next slide, next slide, please. So we know that these capital projects would require additional funds and we know that the remaining funds we have in the existing animal shelter renovation CIP are not enough to to fund any additional capital work. So we don't yet know what those costs would be because again, this is very preliminary conversations. We don't have designs. We haven't even negotiated any term that would commit the city to doing this. But just in advance of this meeting, we've Ms. Nozay's team looked at what potential funding sources might be available. These need, they all need further investigation to determine is the funding eligible for this purpose? How much is actually in these funds and could it cover the costs? And also recognizing that using any of these funds come with additional trade offs, which could include defunding another project that is already planned to move forward. Next slide, please. So timeline and next steps. So again, with early termination, the existing contract expires November of this year. We need sufficient time if we're going to proceed with negotiating a new agreement with Penn, we need sufficient time to do that, to negotiate and finalize that agreement. If we don't move forward with Penn, we would need that same time to look at what an alternate service delivery model might be. That could be returning to an in-house model for shelter services. It could be contracting with an outside organization like Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority, who several neighboring cities do contract with for their animal shelter, actually their animal control and shelter services. Or we could issue a new RFP like we did back in 2016 for a new operator of the animal shelter. So what we're requesting tonight from council is direction on a path forward. We originally had this sentence on the bottom that said that staff would return with an MOU first to demonstrate mutual commitment to negotiating new agreement terms. We actually think that that's an added step that is probably just would use up valuable time. So if you go to the next slide, clerk, we have a we do not. There is, we had a recommended motion that is slightly different that would say staff would return with agreement terms. And then we would come back later with a an actual agreement for approval if this was the direction that council gave us. So that concludes my presentation. So back to you, Mayor Burt, and we are here for questions. Thank you. Excuse me. So before going to the public, do colleagues have any technical questions of on the issue? Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. I'm not clear. Has Penn withdrawn the letter that they sent?
No, they have not.
Okay.
But we're, yeah.
Yeah, just just a point of clarification. Okay. And then questions about operations we'll we'll take later. Those aren't really quite technical or. Okay. Is Penn fully staffed right now at at the Palo Alto Animal Shelter?
I would say the answer to that is no, but for specifics, I'll defer to Ms. McCarthy to answer.
Yeah, right now, we I believe we have five open reps in that we're looking to fill in Palo Alto.
And that's out of how many staff?
That's out of, we have 38 current, 38 across both shelters. So we've got approximately, I would say, I think it's 24 in Palo Alto.
Okay, thank you. And can you tell me, since you're up, Ms. McCarthy, how long does it currently take to get an appointment to spay a cat or a dog? Someone.
I don't, I don't have an exact data. I could get that for you.
That'd be great. We get, we get a lot of communication about, we have received a fair amount of communication about the services.
I would say that we've been understaffed in medical since I've been on board. And we have no RVT since the first of the year, and we cannot do a surgery without an RVT. So we've been pulling over once a week, our RVT sharing it from with our Redwood City facility, but that's definitely handicapped us.
Okay, I'm sorry. What is an RVT?
An RVT is a registered veterinarian technician. So at the top level, you have a DVM, then you have an RVT and have a vet assistant.
Got it. Okay. And can you tell us what changes have occurred in operations since the really unfortunate death last year of the puppy?
Yeah, and I just, I just want to reiterate that that's a devastating event, very tragic that should not have happened. And just like any other organization, we've used that as an opportunity to continually improve our day to day operations. And so we've looked at every aspect of the organization, including transport. And we have since then put in place what I would consider best in class transport protocols. So we've looked at sort of the leading edge or the leading transporters in the country, best friends ASPCA, and integrated those practices into our day to day practices. I feel like we're actually much better than we we were before.
Okay, thanks so much. And we'll presumably talk about budget and things later. Thank you.
Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the staff report addressed some of the big concerns for both parties in the negotiation. As I said, for pets in need, it's it's expediting the construction of the new upgraded dog kennels and expanding others. The shelter for the city, it's having a commitment to the public access to the animal shelter services. Will there be any possible remedies for the for the city if pets in needs reneges on their agreement after? Um, wh- will there be any possible remedies for the, for the city if pets in needs reneges on their agreement after we've already invested? What's going to be a pretty significant, uh, fixed cost of our, of our commitment by com- by completing those various capital projects?
And, um, so councilmember Stone, we're, because we're so early on in these discussions, we haven't really started negotiating any agreement, any agreement terms. Um, the only ones that we've talked about are the ones that we've discussed here tonight. So we would have to get into those details if we decide to move forward with negotiating a new agreement.
All right, understood. But then I'd encourage you to consider that when you get to that phase. Um, staff identified several, uh, other possible scenarios that the city could continue to be able to, um, to operate the animal shelter without pets in need. Uh, i- is there a variety of providers though i- in this area that could offer similar services to, to pets in need? Um, and does staff have any kind of expectations on how successful we might be? Because I understand when we initially put out, um, that proposal, Pets in Need was the only provider that, that actually submitted a request, correct?
Um, that's correct. Well, the RFP went out twice. Um, I think the first time was just Pets in Need. The second time might have been another organization and Pets in Need, but, um, I agree with you. I think of all the choices, an RFP would be the least successful. Um, for the reasons you mentioned, that there's just not a plethora of, um, animal shelter operators out there that, um, you know, are, would respond to an RFP. Um, I think to contract out the services outside of our shelter using Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority or another organization would be, um, a, a different story, but the RFP would, I do not think it would be successful.
Uh, okay, thank you. And then, um, does, would we need a, so if we had a change of policy on, on TNR? I'm curious, would that, would that then require a Sequo review?
That's a good question. I, and I, I don't have an answer. Um, I know that LA County had a similar situation and they did do Sequor review, but I don't know the details behind that. So again, um, these are details that we have not worked out yet, um, in advance of direction from council.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, one, one more question. Uh, the, the cost estimate on the difference between the city uh, offering animal shelter services in-house or, or through an outside provider without, that was performed back in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, I mean, obviously a lot financially has just kind of changed across, I mean, across the whole world since, since then. So I'm curious, do we, do we anticipate that, that we may need to re- reperform that analysis? If we were interested in pursuing i- in-house? Or are we highly confident that, that at least maybe the, the ratio, um, hasn't changed?
I think that ratio probably hasn't changed, but you're right, a lot of, you know, there's been a lot of changes in the world since then. I think there's different scenarios also for how one would operate the, um, clinic, the veterinary clinic. Um, meaning hiring staff versus contracting with staff, things like that. So I think it would be worthwhile, um, looking at that scenario again, if that were the path forward.
All right. Thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, just three, three quick questions. Um, so if I understand that the intent here tonight is to determine, or if we can agree to an MOU to rescind the termination targeting, uh, doing that by March, is that kind of, is that the idea, figure out if we can work with Pets in Need by March and then look at a Plan B after that?
Yes. So I think the goal would be, yes, to have a solid plan forward by the end of March. So we know, which, obviously which path we want to go down. I don't know. City manager, Chicago, you have different thoughts on that?
No, that's, I, I think that's right on. The, um, issue for, uh, just for clarity, uh, and the suggestion of end of March being a date, uh, to, to use as a milestone is the understanding that if, uh, we were to part ways with Pets in Need, that there would be, uh, both, uh, uh, the identification of an alternative service provider as well as a transition that would be required.
And, um, remind me, wasn't the original understanding with Pets in Need, um, that we would commit some capital, but they would also do fundraising? Was, was any of that for capital improvements?
So the fundraising that was discussed, um, during that time was for building a brand-new shelter. Um, and it could have been at the same location or another location. There was then a study done that looked at, um, the feasibility of actually raising funds for this. And the confidence in doing that wasn't, um, overwhelmingly positive. Um, so I think, you know, the first, we're in year four, so the first three years has really been, um, just getting operations going and then, but you know, the pandemic caused a, um, a shift in that as well. So, but you're, you are remembering that correctly.
Okay. And then, uh, last questions, what, what is done with feral cats today?
Could you answer that, Valerie?
Yeah, so, uh, what is done with feral cats today is, um, they're relocated outside of the jurisdiction. And so, um, the, the problem with that is, is two things. If, uh, you know, our mission is to provide loving care and lasting homes to animals that come into our care. And, uh, and we abide by the humane standards of the United States in animal treatment. And it's two things. It's shown that when you relocate a cat, it actually, um, causes great distress and their survival rate is very low. And also, um, and some of, some of the conflict about returning a cat into that area is that the cats, you're trying to purge cats of that area. The research has shown that when you remove a cat from a certain area, there's a va- a vacuum effect. So other cats come in and fill that. And so if it, it, you just, it's an endless cycle. If you're trying to purge the cats, because you're always having to continuously supply of fertile cats. Whereas if you put back in a, a sterilized cat, that cat's eventually going to die off. And that's actually known to be the quickest and most humane ways of getting rid of cats in areas. It doesn't happen overnight, obviously, but it happens in the course of, you know, a generation of a cat. And so it's, it's a combination of actually, we feel like being sensitive to the area, but also humane treatment of the cats.
When you say it's not in this jurisdiction, I mean, do other areas agree to take feral cats?
Or, yeah, yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions. One, that last, I, I didn't quite follow that if you relocate a cat, a feral cat to another location, it would cause a backfill of other cats moving into that territory. But if the cat died from old age, it wouldn't cause that same backfill?
Um, that's a, that's a really good question. Um, and I, I don't have a good answer on that.
Okay. Um, and then my next question is really more for staff on the, the, um, scale necessary, uh, for the new kennels. So this whole process of looking at a, bringing in a partner provider of services was initiated after Mountain View abruptly left our, uh, animal shelter program. And I don't know what percentage of our service needs they were, I'm guessing thirty-plus percent. Um, maybe thirty-five or more. And so we had a certain kennel capacity, uh, that was outdated kennels, but a certain capacity to meet, um, the amount of service we had to provide. So if we needed to rebuild, uh, the kennels, would it necessarily be at the same size that they were when we were serving Mountain View?
So, um, I can take a stab at this. So I, I did have a conversation today with our ACOs just to talk about the history and how often the kennels, um, prior to Penn were at capacity. It was rare. Um, more so, it would happen when Mountain View was still under contract with the city, but that was still a fairly rare occurrence where every dog kennel had, um, was occupied. So that was prior to Penn.
Okay, well, I'll revisit that under comments then. And then, uh, this timeframe that we're now both under, I heard that, um, over half of Pets in Need employees are, uh, allocated to our uh, facilities and our services. Um, so I, it sounds like a withdrawal from this agreement would mean significant layoffs, uh, for their personnel. Uh, if it was not transitioned smoothly, it would be very negative impacts potentially on the animals themselves. Um, and it seems like this, this whole thing was triggered, uh, when we had a, the, the former executive director who, uh, seemed to act, act abruptly in response to, in part, a large part, um, the, um, the legal responses to the, um, the puppy deaths. So I'm all, I say that to lead up to the question of, is this process at this point in time, if we're all, both parties are attempting good-faith negotiations on a long-term extension, which sounds like some pretty complicated terms to still be worked out? Um, is this being rammed through based upon actions that were taken by the, the prior executive director? And what we need to be looking at perhaps is a tolling agreement of some sort that gives both parties ample time to do this in a methodical way, uh, rather than in some way that may break down simply because we ran out of time. So Director O'Kane, do you have any thoughts on whether there really is enough time built into this process to do it without having to ram it through?
Yeah, um, I appreciate that question, um, Mayor Burt. I think it's going to be a challenge for sure. Um, the current agreement, I think, took two years to negotiate. Um, granted, you know, I think we could use a lot of the, you know, some of the, the backbone of that agreement to develop a new one, but some of these terms are going to be, um, difficult to negotiate. So I think it's going to be a stretch, honestly, to, to get to November. Um.
And Ms. McCarthy, have, have you and your board, uh, looked at the prospect of kind of tolling? Um, the, uh, notification of intent to terminate?
Can you repeat your question? I'm not sure what you mean by tolling.
It, it means to basically call it, give it an extension of some period of time. So to allow the two parties to, uh, work out their agreement in a more methodical way.
Yes, I think we're definitely open, but I, I think we, just like the city, you know, is expecting from us, we would like a good faith effort that we're moving forward positively together. Um, we're very excited about the long-term relationship with Palo Alto. Um, I understand that there's been difficulties in the past, but it hasn't. And I would take responsibility for Penn, that the relationship has not been perfect on both sides. And part of what I've been trying to do since I've come in is to work very collaboratively with Kristen and Ed and the team, and they've been great. And I really feel like there's, there's a road forward for us to work collaboratively, but it's going to take a commitment from both sides.
Thank you for that. All right. Um, Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, could, just, uh, listening to Valerie speak about issues on both sides and I saw some, some of our police officers are attending tonight. I wondered if we could maybe get a comment from them about the animal control side and, um, where we see that relationship going, which I think is one of the issues.
I'm sorry, do we have them available on the call?
Yeah, hi, councilmembers. Uh, Cody McCartney, uh, Lead Animal Control Officer here. Um, I mean, I think since Valerie's taken over, we have made positive steps, um, with our relationship and in part with the city staff working together. So I think there is, um, a, a path forward. Uh, but it is, like Kristen said, going to take a lot of work.
Okay, thank you. All right. So at this time, we'd like to hear from any members of the public who would like to speak on this item. And then we'll return to the council for, uh, discussion and direction. All right. So we already have some speakers. Our first speaker, well, let's see how many speakers we have. Okay. Okay. Is it six so far, Leslie? Okay. All right. So each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. And we'll be, uh, closing the speaker cards, uh, very shortly after the first speaker. Our first speaker is Michael Ferreira, to be followed by Juliana Pendleton. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burt and, uh, councilmembers. I am the, a member of the Executive Committee of the Loma Prieta Chapter of the Sierra Club. And as you might guess, one of the items that has attracted our attention is the trap and release aspect of this. Uh, we are opposed to those kinds of programs as Palo Alto has been in the past. And it does seem like a little bit of a forced discussion that that would be part of the negotiation uh, that would have to be concluded or else terminate. Uh, I, I can't really say that, that as a member of the public and as a member of the Sierra Club that I receive that positively. I do want to add that, uh, I thought I heard a lot of very good questions from the council members that are here. Uh, and so as a former council member myself, I commend that. I, uh, I do think there's a, a better way forward here. You know, we have our headquarters here in Palo Alto. We're actually very proud of that. We're proud of Palo Alto. It's deep in our history. I would hope that Palo Alto will hold the line against this kind of environmentally degrading activity. And that if that ever resurfaces as something that you are interested in doing, one would hope that a thorough environmental analysis would be conducted. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Juliana Pendleton, to be followed by Eileen McLaughlin. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and councilmembers. My name is Juliana Pendleton, and I'm the Environmental Advocacy Assistant for Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Santa Clara Valley Audubon objects to trap neuter, trap and neuter release programs, or TNR. Feral cats are an invasive predator with devastating impacts to ecosystems worldwide. Feral cats are hazardous to wildlife in the neighborhoods, in open spaces, and in baylands. TNR is especially harmful to wildlife that live and breed on the ground. From baby rabbits to ducklings to burrowing elves and endangered speech species, including salt marsh harvest mice and the Ridgeway, Ridgway rail. I am glad Penn and Palo Alto staff are looking to avoid TNR in sensitive habitats. But migratory birds are everywhere in Palo Alto, and we are greatly concerned. Palo Alto's current agreement stipulates that Penn cannot release feral cats within the city of Palo Alto or any of its partner cities. This provision protects birds and wildlife in Palo Alto from depredation and disease. If Palo Alto looks to change this provision, exploring this topic with participation from community stakeholders is not enough. Such change due to its potential impacts to migratory birds and endangered species should be considered a project and require Sequo review. We hope you provide direction to Penn not to include a TNR program in negotiating with Penn. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eileen McLaughlin, to be followed by Karen Holman. Welcome.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Burt and members of council. I'm Eileen McLaughlin with the Citizens Committee to complete the refuge. Trap and neuter are helpful parts of TNR. Some such cats are adoptable. It is the return release where big issues arise. I could speak in depth about the extraordinary harm wandering cats inflict on wildlife in sensitive habitats that range from the Baylands to Foothills Park or in anyone's backyard. that range from the Baylands to Foothills Park or in anyone's backyard. But instead, let's talk about a common term used related to cats released in TNR, community cats. Who decides it is a community cat? It wouldn't be a parent of small children who doesn't want cats defecating in the yard, nor for the same reason, a family or a school with a vegetable garden. It wouldn't be a rental property owner who knows cats would deter potential renters who are allergic to cats. It wouldn't be a landfill operator that is required to remove pest animals like cats. TNR practitioners are the ones who call them community cats. The actual community is not given a choice. The issues get worse, like cat feeding, which attracts wildlife from raccoons to rats, and diseases spread among cats and across species that gather at feeding stations, including diseases passed to humans through feces. Finally, no peer-reviewed studies have ever concluded that TNR works to successfully manage cat populations. I ask that you retain the no-release rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Holman to be followed by Carol Hyde. Welcome. Former Mayor Holman.
Thank you very much. And first of all, I am really pleased that staff and Penn are working to come to a renewed agreement and also appreciate the very intelligent questions that council has been asking and the responses from staff. It's looking very forward. I'm also really encouraged by Pets in Need saying that they are interested in, in tolling the termination letter, or I would say maybe even rescinding the letter and working towards a, a new agreement. But at any rate, let's not put ourselves under extreme pressure. My memory is, I was on the council at the time, my memory is that there were two RFPs issued and responses to both RFPs came solely from Penn. That's, that's my memory. Savaka, Silicon Valley Animal. That is not a no-kill service. So that's one of the reasons that it was not pursued previously and in terms of transferring the shelter to there. When the city was then looking to close the shelter for a Policy and Services Committee meeting, the council chambers were overflowing with people, literally overflowing. So I'm glad that's not, that's not what's being pursued here. It all just points out why also it's so important to get this agreement worked out with, with pets in need to the satisfaction of both entities, and I'm confident that that can happen. It's not a good option to think of going to some other location. The further away from a lost pet, the less likelihood there is a reunion between an owner and a pet. And that's data that supports that. City-run is more expensive and also there's the, I don't know if the cost of $400,000 higher includes weekends being open. One of the things that was not really attractive about the prior situation was that the shelter was not open on weekends, and that's, of course, when a lot of people go out to find their new pets. I, basically, those are my comments. Y'all have done a great job of asking questions and I'm just so pleased that y'all are working towards, towards a new agreement between the city and Penn. But please don't put a, put an arbitrary, although it's a year, don't put an arbitrary deadline on this. Let's get it. Most important thing is to get a new agreement worked out. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Hyde to be followed by Lenore Delgado. Welcome.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So Mayor Bird and members of the council, I'm Carol Hyde. I'm Director of Programs at the Palo Alto Humane Society. We support continued negotiations of Pets in Need for managing the shelter located in Palo Alto. Residents of Palo Alto want to have a shelter in Palo Alto. As Karen just said, this was made clear when the city manager in 2012 proposed closing the shelter, and you will recall the impassioned public response. The shelter is a familiar topic to us at Palo Alto Humane Society. You may know that we built and operated shelters for Palo Alto until 1970. More recently, we served on the city's working group to drop the RFP, and as Councilmember Stone said, there was only one respondent, which was Pets in Need. There were absolutely no other bidders for the shelter. It's urgently important to keep the shelter running along with a fully functioning spay-neuter clinic. Please make that happen. A TNR policy, as Pets in Need is recommending, and the intake and care of small animals, an issue that Councilmember Phil Seth has flagged. You're going to get a lot of letters from the public supporting TNR, maybe some opposing. But as a founding member of the Stanford Cat Network, I can vouch for the success of TNR as a way to control homeless cat numbers. Under negotiated agreement with the university, Stanford's cat population was reduced over time from 500 cats to a current 25. This is the work of volunteers and residents, and that success relies on access to a spay-neuter clinic and supportive policy. By the way, Palo Alto already has a ban on TNR in the baylands. So I think that that policy should be kept and a TNR policy for city release should be supported. A fully functioning shelter with these programs, along with Palo Alto's excellent animal control officers, is of vital interest to the people of Palo Alto. We ask that you continue and support this important service. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lenore Delgado to be followed by our final speaker, Pam DeCharo. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, I'm Lenore Delgado, the Education Manager for Palo Alto Society, Palo Alto Humane Society, and our acronym is the Great Homonym of Paws. So on behalf of Paws, we thank the city council for this opportunity to speak. Paws has been operating in this community for more than 110 years, and throughout this century-plus, we've been helping animals, all kinds of animals, wild animals, domestic animals, and pets. We are very concerned that our communities, Palo Alto, Los Altos, and Los Altos Hills, will continue to have shelter services and the services of the city's animal control officers, and we support efforts by all parties to maintain these services. We're looking forward to a quick and successful resolution of the renegotiation process. A major concern for us is re-establishing a fully functioning, low-cost spay-neuter clinic and corollary low-cost vaccination programs. These services are of urgent need, especially for local, local, lower-income people and their pets, volunteers in the rescue community, and our own residents. We urge you to hasten this reopening. The sooner the better. A fully functioning clinic will increase revenues produced by the shelter. It will allow Paws, that's us, to do what we do best, provide financial assistance for these services through our successful voucher program, interface with concerned residents and rescuers, partner with the local shelter, and above all, save lives. Our second major concern is the implementation of a TNR trap-neuter return policy for community, also known as feral cats, which is in place in all our other area-wide shelter partners, and which is also a great concern for pets in need, the only area shelter that does not practice TNR. As does Pets in Need, we want to address the homeless cat population through community outreach, financial aid, with a focus on saving lives, fostering, adoption of tame cats, socialization of kittens, maintaining safe colonies of spayed and neutered cats that will result in population attrition. Paws cares about all animals, so we support keeping cats out of areas designated for the preservation of endangered species. We also support the trapping, neutering, and relocation of these cats in lieu of euthanasia. We ask you as well to consider the suggestions offered by Councilmember Phil Seth regarding the intake and care of small animals. We look forward to the opportunity to discuss these issues with city council members, Pets in Need staff, and other concerned members of the community. Thank you again on behalf of us at Paws. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Pam DeCharo. Welcome. Ms. DeCharo, are you able to hear?
All right, can you hear me?
We can. Go right ahead.
Thank goodness. Thank you so much. Mayor Bird, city council members, Valerie, and Cody, thank you so much. Thank you so much for being open to new and creative solutions for these problems. I'm, I'm very proud to even have my voice heard. As both a Palo Alto resident and business owner for more than 30 years, I'm hoping that my opinion counts for something today. Seven years ago, I became involved in cat rescue. That title includes abandoned, stray, lost, and feral cats who have become community cats. Responsible citizens have come together to feed, protect, try to home when we can, and of course, trap and neuter all of these. I was dismayed to learn that Palo Alto, in fact, has no program at all, formal or otherwise, to manage this issue. Other surrounding communities have decent programs, which we should likely emulate, but how our community cats are administered to now is a mystery. We don't really know whether they're euthanized, dumped, we just don't know. I implore the council to do the right and ethical thing here and finally insist on authorizing the creation of a decent TNR program, a spay-neuter program, and an educational support system, which will help citizens manage homeless cats and needing care. Please bear in mind, everyone benefits. When unadoptable ferals and neutered are neutral, neutered and returned to a safe area, they live out their lives peacefully, do not reproduce, grow old, and die. Many, many ferals, after being neutered and fostered, become loving pets, living mostly indoors. The steady stream of feral kittens is prevented, and cats that were lost and abandoned find new homes as well. It is time. The citizens of Palo Alto need and want to step up and support the creation and administration of a feral cat program, which is actually nothing more than our surrounding neighboring cities and towns are doing now. I, I guess, I guess I went through that very quickly, but I really applaud everyone here. I think everyone is trying to do their very, very best. I'm, I'm really so thankful that everyone is very open to new ideas and to working together. I think it's marvelous. I, I do think that we need to determine where this policy that, that we can't have a TNR program. Everybody else in the country has major ones, and we have none. Where, where does that come from? When did that start? And who makes the final decision as to that? I think we, as a community, I'm a resident, I own a business, I, I think, I speak to people all the time, and I know that everyone is interested. They all want to know what's happening to the animals and feral cats. I think we should get to the bottom of, of where this is all starting, and I really do applaud everyone for wanting to work together. Thanks, thanks for hearing me. Thanks for hearing me out. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So we'll now return to the council for discussion and motions. And Councilmember DeBois, you're first. Okay, that's from previously. Would anybody else like to go first? Well, I have a couple of follow-ups then. I want to make sure I understood, our current contract, did, did it have a, a TNR requirement?
No.
Does it? Okay. All right. And let me, unless others are ready to go, I, I, I would be ready to make a motion. Councilmember Cormac, go right ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Bird. The one thing I'd like to have a further discussion of is understanding, you know, it's a pretty big capital commitment the city is already on the hook for. And, you know, I, I guess my question is, could Pets in Need make do with what's in the original plan? And if not, what is it that they think needs to be built and what are the benefits that would bring? Understanding we don't have any numbers attached to it, but those are sort of the two questions, like, can, can we have a, a, a well-functioning animal shelter with the capital commitment that we've already made?
Councilmember, is that a question for staff or for Penn?
Yes. Whichever of you would, would, would get, I'd be interested in hearing both perspectives, frankly.
Sure. I'll share the staff perspective, and I think that if we moved forward with either of the two kennel designs that we had originally had, one was the 16 kennel, new kennel building, the other was renovation of the existing kennels. I think either of those would be, from a staff perspective, I think we would be fine with either of those.
Okay. And Ms. McCarthy, any thoughts on what, what it would, if, if that would be sufficient for operations and, and what is it you envision would be in a larger capital plan? What, what benefits would that provide?
Yes. So let me address the, the dog kennel specifically. So we current, currently have 22 kennels in the existing dog facility, and we have four ICU units. What we're proposing is that we would replace the existing dog kennels of 22 with, I think it's 24 dog kennels. So right now, we have a total capacity of 26, and we're proposing a total capacity of 24. And the issue with the current one is that the way it's constructed is that there's no quarantine facilities, but there's no separation of animal kennels of different status. So in the animal shelter world, we have what we call RTG animals. They're ready to go. They're fully healthy. They're ready to be adopted. We have quarantine animals that have not finished their health checks. They have not finished their vaccinations. They might be in, in a bite hole, et cetera. And then we have the, the very contagious animals that are in ICU. And right now, the ICU unit, I see the four dog kennels that we have are separate, so that's okay. But I feel like putting any existing money in the existing kennel where there's actually, there's no disease control across the existing kennels that we have. One is, is not a good use of funds. And two, I don't know if anybody has actually been to the facility in Palo Alto, but if you've been there, the facilities are 50 years old, the tile materials and the materials in the building, the sound control is, is, is very stressful, or the lack of sound control is very stressful for the animals. You get one dog barking, I don't know, if some of you all have been in there, you're nodding your head. It's cockafony. And it's, we don't feel like we're actually meeting the five freedoms required or that is, is, is mandated in the animal sheltering world in that type of a facility, given the stressful conditions. And so what we're proposing is that, that we don't invest more money in that facility, and we instead replace it in a new facility. Yes, putting a Band-Aid on it will, will be a, a short-term fix, but it's, it's not a long-term solution for the shelter. There's been no deferred, you know, there's been no maintenance. There's tremendous amount of deferred maintenance in the building, and it's, it, it's just not a very adequate working environment for the shelter or for the animals.
It's like the theme of this evening. Okay, thank you so much.
Councilmember DeBois?
Yeah, so just wanted to start off by saying I do think we've had some mishaps on both sides. Obviously, the issues with the animals dying, dying from the heat, the capital commitments we made, and kind of the time it's taken to fix the dog kennels. I'm less clear on kind of where we are in the conflicts around animal control, and I think it's probably a two-way street. I just want to say, at the end of last year, I toured, toured the shelter, and I was part of what I think was a very positive meeting with Valerie and another board member, as well as our staff. And I do think both, both parties are interested in getting this relationship back on track. And, and Ms. McCarthy, you didn't really introduce yourself tonight. Would, would you mind just giving us a little bit about your background?
Sure. I've spent my first 20 years in the technology world, running companies. I committed the last six years working full-time in the animal welfare industry. I got a master's in animal studies at NYU. I spent three years on the ground working at ASPCA in New York. I spent three years on the ground, working at ASPCA in New York City, and doing community fieldwork as well, working with the ACOs there in a very difficult, very challenging environment. And I also did field deployment with the ASPCA, where I went out into rescue operations, out into the Midwest to do rescue organizations. So I do have some animal sheltering experience. I'm very, I'm quite still involved with the ASPCA. I'm very involved with Best Friends, another national organization, two of the other big national organizations that are very focused on access to care models, which means removing barriers to caring for animals. One being HAAS, Human and Animal Support Services, and American Pets Alive. And a lot of the thinking that we're bringing into the shelter and in the environment is the experience that I've had and the network that we're a part of. I have very much of a philosophy that we cannot be an island, and there's, I mean, success in the animal sheltering world is about collaboration at all levels with human support services, as well as other animal shelters at the local, regional, national level. And it gets pretty exciting when you think about the impact that you can make, when you think about it in a collaborative effort and collaborative way. It takes a village by all means.
Yeah, thank you for that, very, you know, to give a very impressive background. So we did get this termination notice. I agree with some of the earlier comments about, you know, maybe one of the things we could discuss early on as you're working through this MOU is agreeing to extend the termination. So I think the idea originally was about, we'd have about 12 months if things don't work out to find a replacement and transition. And so I don't know if that's something Pets in Need would be willing to do, but rather than have this March deadline, you know, in some ways, the deadline is good. And it'd be good to know if we're going to be working together or not. But it'd also be good, maybe we agree upfront that the termination would be 12 months after whichever date, you know, we decide that we're not going to be able to come to an MOU, or we are. The other thing I really wanted to talk about was the budget commitment. It seemed very unclear, and we got an updated report. I'd really like to see that be kind of a fixed budget amount, rather than open-ended. And so that's one of my concerns. Like, if we had an MOU, let's commit to a number, and we'll get as much done as we can with that amount of money. I think the other points people have made, you know, needing to see a spay and neuter clinic operating with good hours for the public. I think coherent operating software, we haven't really talked about that tonight, but that was an issue that had come up. I think it was making sure your two locations were running on the same software. That makes sense to me. The one issue I'm not really sure about is this feral cat issue. And it seems like it pits cat lovers against wildlife lovers. And, you know, we're getting emails on both sides of that issue. I'm concerned when we talk about sensitive habitat areas. We do have a lot of parks in Palo Alto. We have naturalized creeks that run through neighborhoods. I don't think it's just the Baylands. And it'd be good, maybe, if that topic wasn't part of the MOU, or if we could give that topic more time. Because personally, tonight, I'm not really sure which side makes sense on that item. But I support the idea of focusing on getting an MOU in place and doing that as quickly as we can. So thanks for your work, both of you guys, Kristin and Valerie.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to staff for bringing this forward, and Valerie for your work as well and being here. Ms. O'Kane, I did appreciate the slideshow, especially with all the photos. It was melting my heart. I'm glad you just didn't include the Sarah McLachlan, "In the Arms of an Angel" soundtrack over it, otherwise I really would have started crying. I'm with Councilmember DuBois on this issue with the TNR. I mean, in many ways, it makes sense, but I'm also worried, and several speakers tonight brought up this point, about feral cats being released into sensitive and vulnerable habitats, especially areas like the Baylands, more along kind of creek beds. I mean, we do know cats are natural predators and do prey on small birds and critters. So would be good to address that issue. I mean, if, I think if we move forward and have the TNR, we do need to make sure that we are very clear about where these cats can be released. I'm also curious, though, and I'd like to hear Penn's kind of thoughts on their perspective. Why, going back to that answer to Councilmember DuBois's question earlier, why is it not adequate right now to just continue to release the cats outside of Palo Alto and into another jurisdiction?
Yeah, so I'll answer that. I would say, and Cody could actually help me on this, because I was thinking about it after I answered the question. Almost all the feral cats that are brought in, we try to find a home for because of the limitations that we have. And if you can understand how hard that is to do, if anybody has ever dealt with a feral cat or tried to socialize a feral cat, it is very, very difficult. So, you know, in essence, our arms are tied. And I know that we don't want to debate the TNR issue tonight, but I would really appreciate the council not making a decision on this until we have an opportunity to put forth our side in a more formal manner. I think some of the comments tonight were great. They were obviously well-prepared. And I was not prepared tonight to come with, you know, a strong defense on this, but we actually have thought a lot about it, and there's been a lot of research that has been done that have actually been peer-reviewed. And I would love to have an opportunity to share that with the committee before shutting this down as a discussion item.
Thank you, and I think that's fair for where we're at. I would encourage you in the future to make sure you share that research with council before this comes back. But I do think it would be worthy, having some parameters there, at least, as far as what are deal breakers for the council, as far as, again, like not being able to release the cats, maybe east of 101, and maybe some other parameters that we might think of. Then a quick question for staff. Does staff have an issue with Penn's desire for a new shelter database? So that's something we haven't really heard about.
It's not an issue if it's one that we can mutually agree to. So, and I know Valerie and I have talked about this, and she's talked to Cody, and I think we're all on the same page here. So we all want something that works best for shelter staff, for the ACOs, and that our, you know, current and past data can be transferred to. So there's no issue with exploring it at all. It just needs to be something that we all find to be a valuable exercise.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, and I also agree with the mayor and Councilmember DuBois as far as seeing if we can get an agreement to toll the termination notice. That seems reasonable, especially given the lengthy timeline and what Director O'Kane said earlier about the unlikely hight of us being able to meet that November deadline, at least if I heard you correctly. Those are all my comments for now, thank you.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and take a stab at a motion. And first, I really do want to express appreciation for the good faith efforts that both Pets in Need and our staff are now proceeding under. It does seem that both parties are wanting to come up with a long-term solution. We have a number of important unresolved issues. And from having seen that these kinds of negotiations do take time or are complicated, there's the amount of time needed to narrow the issues and even agree in principle, and then additional time to iron out all the details and legalese of them. And so within my, I think that if we were to have, at this time, a tolling period of six months past what is the current deadline, that would give ample time for both parties to know, are we close to a deal? And if we are, then the parties can then agree on whatever additional time to iron out the final elements of it. So I would propose that we have a, we proceed with negotiations with Pets in Need.
Second.
Okay. We proceed with negotiations with Pets in Need for a long-term contract agreement for animal services in Palo Alto. Staff can correct me on any necessary language changes. That, next, we'll start with point one, that the notice of termination be extended for six months beyond the current date. Second, that we evaluate the necessary kennel size for serving the needs of current community partners, meaning our other communities that we serve. Third, that we include some form of trap and neuter program. And I'll speak to that in a moment. Fourth, that we include a small animal area in the plans. Next, that we assure that the contract have agreed upon hours of operation. And lastly, that the parties agree to pursue a fundraising program to supplement capital needs for the shelter. So if we have a second, I will speak to one part of that.
I'll second if we can modify the language on the trap and neuter program slightly and say we consider some form of trap and neuter program.
Well,
I don't think we ought to commit to it tonight.
Well, I, so let me, then, before deciding, you deciding whether you're going to offer a second. I called it a trap and neuter program, and I did not include the necessary neuter and release. And as I've come to understand it tonight, we really have, okay, so is that acceptable then?
Yes.
Okay. So then I'll speak to that part of the motion. The reason I framed it that way is we've come to understand there's really three parts or alternatives or combinations that could occur on after trapping and neutering. And they include release in the city, release outside the city, and adoption. And we've heard that not all feral cats are candidates for adoption, so that's not a total solution. We are not sure on the, how much release in the community we're comfortable with, and I don't think we want to try to decide that tonight. But maybe there's some combination of these things that would be the right balance. And then I also just wanted to speak on the capital fundraising. I actually was on the council when we first had this issue come forward, and we had a lot of community partners who said, you know, if you don't close the kennel, we will be able to provide significant fundraising. That hasn't materialized. I think we have a lot of community support for these efforts. Pets in Need has great community support and backers. And that, I think that we, because of our financial situation as a city since the pandemic, we're really constrained on our ability to, and how many dollars we can invest in our capital projects. We're looking at curtailing a lot of, or just slowing down a lot of the capital spending in our community that is for a lot of different needs. And having a portion of the capital plan be based upon the fundraising would be something that I think should be feasible. And that how much of an improvement to the capital plan we do should be in part dependent on how much donor fundraising could be brought in in combination with the city contributions. And so I think those are the main points. Councilmember Phil Seth?
Yeah, thank you. So again, I agree with pretty much everything the mayor said. Just briefly, the, I mean, the issue of the capital costs and the kennels and so forth. You know, if we need to make the investment in kennels in order to keep a viable shelter in the long run, then we need to do it no matter who's operating it. So really, the decision seems to me, do we want to continue to have a shelter in Palo Alto? Or do we want to go do what other people have done and outsource to SVACA or PHS or somebody like that? And I think, I think most people in town want us to continue to have a good shelter, okay? As for Pets in Need, I continue to have a lot of admiration for the Pets in Need team. I think, you know, obviously, we had the tragedy last year and so forth, but I think, I think that I continue, and I think most of us continue to have faith in the Pets in Need team are people we want to partner with. And so I'm delighted that they're interested in continuing to work with us. And I think, you know, I think, I think we have a very good chance to move forward here. As for the trap and release, or the trap and neuter programs and so forth, you know, these tend to pit wildlife people against cat people. I think, you know, in a true partnership, let's sit down. I think everybody agrees that we want to not have feral cat colonies running around. And so I think everybody agrees on that, and I think, you know, we should sit down with Pets in Need and have a meaningful discussion about what the best way to achieve that is.
Thank you. Councilmember Cormac?
Thank you, Mayor Bird. Would the maker and seconder consider adding Explore Transition to a New Database, which I think the staff requested?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Is there a small animal area now at the shelter?
There is.
Okay, so what is this request, then?
It is to renovate and expand and include some outdoor areas for cats that are called catios.
Should we then change the wording in the motion to include a small area in the renovation plans? Small animal area, is that more appropriate? Is that what's being asked for?
Can I weigh in on that a little bit?
Sure.
If it's a reference to the question that I asked earlier, you know, there are a number of, a number of sort of cases that we need to make sure we've got covered in any agreement. And one of the things that's been a little bit ambiguous in the past has been the disposition of pet animals that are not dogs and cats. So pet rabbits, you know, pet hamsters, pet chickens, things like that. I think they're not wildlife, but they're not dogs and cats either. And I think in our previous process, I mean, I think we've learned a lot in the last three years between us and Pets in Need. And so the question I asked about small animals is really related to the disposition of those kinds of things. I mean, do we spay and neuter rabbits? Do we hang on to rabbits after they're turned in for a week or until they're on earth? Shows, I mean, true wildlife, they send to PHS or somebody like that. What do we do with things that are neither wildlife nor dogs and cats? And that was the question I asked before. So if small animal refers to that, then catios is sort of a different thing. But if small animals refers to cats, then catios is the right thing.
Well, we actually have in the staff presentation a reference to this. So I don't know if staff wants to provide a clarification on the intent that they had and what we should have in the motion here.
Right, so I think there's two different things. In the staff report, in the presentation, I talked about Penn's, I guess, I'll just say, request to do work in the small animal area. I guess I'll just say request to do work in the small animal area, capital work, which is where the cats are and other small animals. If you go into the shelter, you'll see that there's animals like rabbits in the lobby. So their. Thinking is that there needs to be renovation there and also more space and better utilized space. And correct me if I'm wrong, Eric Valerie.
So my my question a moment ago was if we added. In this clause on include a small animal area in the renovation plans, does that address the issue? Or is it operations as well that you're referring to?
So what I was referring to was in the renovation plans.
Okay, so if the second or is comfortable, let's add that word there.
I would accept that.
Okay, sorry.
No worries. So this is all helpful.
Okay.
Next, next on the hours of operation. Do we also need to to talk about services? I mentioned that because I think there's some concern in the community that the desired services haven't been provided. Would you be willing to add upon hours of operations and services provided?
Yes.
Is your second or nodding?
Hit my buttons here. Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing, and I don't usually do this, but I wonder if we should also be asking for consequences. In the event that the service, you know, levels of service aren't aren't. Aren't provided.
Well, I would say that. Some form of that I would hope would be. Built into the the contract negotiations, but I'd prefer not to stipulate it this time.
Understood, but I don't I don't know what's in the current contract, so I know that staff is listening. Okay. And then with respect to. The capital needs. You know, I do recall actually being interviewed for the feasibility study, and I do recall. As Director O'Kane said, that the feasibility study was is not consistent with, you know, sufficient. Community support for financials. So. And I know how much work it takes for the city to try to participate in fundraising, so. When we get there, if the maker and second or if the mayor is willing to to separate that out. The other thing that I would be slightly more amenable to is if we, you know, modify a supplement. Capital needs to say supplement already identified capital needs, which I think may be where. Councilmember DeBois was going, so I'll leave it there, but I would like that one separated out when we vote. Thank you.
So is it your understanding that? That. Section. Would be obligating the city to actually. Be a leader in the fundraising as opposed to. A more open ended intent.
My understanding is the former, and I think that's part of the problem that we we might have run into before.
So my intent was not that we would necessarily and in all likelihood. Be. Participants in the fundraising program, but it's a pursuit of it, and that can be with other partners like pause and whoever else.
Okay, I'm still interested in us limiting our capital expenditures to what's already been identified.
Oh, that's okay. That's different from.
It's two things. It's two things here, right? One is that I I'm not interested in our staff spending a lot of time on fundraising programs.
Nor am I.
Okay, and then two is I would like us to limit. The capital expenditures to what's already been identified.
By identified, you mean the the dollar amount as opposed to the. Purposes?
Yes, I mean, the dollars.
Okay.
So I'm not asking that as amendment. I'm just asking that you split that out because I think it's still pretty. Amorphous.
Well, you say split it out, but. Where are you referring to?
Oh, well, I guess these aren't lettered, which they often are in emotion.
I think it'd be good if we go ahead and do that, but still, where are you referring to?
So the the second to last letter, whatever that ends up being, the fundraising program to supplement capital needs. I just think we're really early in the process on that. And I'd prefer to limit. Our expenditures for the city to what we've already identified, which is the remaining.
Right, and so I'm. I am good with that, and that was the intent of. Pursuing additional fundraising.
Okay.
Be additional capital needs.
So maybe we say. To supplement existing capital funding.
Commitments, yes. Funding commitments.
So in F. Existing capital commitments. Excellent. Thank you.
Works for me.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So on B. Which actually, Madam Clark, I think you still have two items in B. But the first one, that's not something that the city can unilaterally do by.
Agreed. So this is a condition for going forward with negotiations.
I see. Okay, so my suggestion was going to be it either be request that or. That that perhaps you even do some consultation now in the meeting. But I see. So the intent to staff is that this would be. A condition.
Yes. All right, so. Under your first suggestion. Ms. McCarthy, are you able to? Offer a response. On. Be there that that's kind of a precondition for us, both parties going forward in a good faith effort.
It's something the board has discussed. It's not something they've approved. They said that they would definitely be open to it. But I can't unilaterally commit to any of this. And there are also items on this list. That we have not addressed or discussed as a board. And that I would need to take back to them to to ask and consider. So some of this will be surprising to them, but it's not, again, we're here trying to work collaboratively together, so. I'm happy to to try to work through that. That next step.
Yeah, and I guess what I. Just for my colleagues is that. It appears that both parties do want to move forward in that basis. If we couldn't get a tolling agreement. Then. We'd be in a situation of. Hoping that we can work something out and running up against a deadline that could be very harmful if it didn't get worked out. So. So I would propose that we put. Put B as A instead and that say that. As a. Condition for. Continuing good faith negotiations. That pets in need would agree. To. A. To the following, yes.
Would 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 agree to extend the notice of termination for six months.
That's what it says now. Yes. And is a second or good with that change as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Okay.
I think both of us, both of us are are interested in in. In having the negotiation. Be successful, right? And and the appropriate time for that, and pets in need has a different idea for what the time period would be. I think it's going to take 12 months instead of six months or something like that. You know, I think we should be open to that.
Great. Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, well, you fixed one of the main points I wanted to make again. Maybe pets and need could could say, what what points did you find surprising?
I was gonna ask that too.
Yeah, the thing that is new for us is the fundraising program. It's the fundraising program, and it's also the discussions we've had with the city, and I understand it's been without a council approval, but. Has been talking about. You know, how do we? How do we transform the shelter into being? A sustainable shelter that actually delivers animal care the way that it should be in an animal sheltering environment? And. I think it's a real challenge, and but but we'll go back and really scratch our heads on it. How we do it, given the remaining budget that's left, especially given the fact that. The existing product projects that were done were done over budget, which leads even a smaller amount left. To improve what's there. It just becomes a really hard conundrum. So.
So let me ask that. Let me ask the maker of the motion something. I mean. I mean, I think it's pretty clear to all of us. It's going to take more money than the than than the existing commitment, right? Are. Are you propose? Are you? Is it? Is it your intent to say that, you know, a fundraising program is going to fill the gap or? Or how's all that?
The that item was. The parties agreed to pursue. It wasn't. It's not framed in a way that. Requires specific outcomes.
So. Again. So this motion is not authorizing to fund the kennel renovations, and. I got to say those kennels are pretty old school. And I thought that was kind of the main point of this M O U. So, you know, what does evaluate kennel size mean? Like, what are we expecting C to do?
So I think there are a couple related. Things that are attempted to be embedded in this motion. One is along the lines of what Councilmember Cormac was talking about, which is. Having our capital commitment. Be limited to what we had previously committed. The second is this issue that I haven't really seen explored, and Director O'Kane. Indicated that. The we well, first, Ms. McCarthy made the good points about the need to. Modernize the segregation of different. Pets within the kennel. So that's not so much a size, but it is a cost of remodeling. The second thing is. I've been scratching my head on why the size and the number of. Pets that can be accommodated in the kennel is needing to be the same number as when we had Mountain View as a major partner. In this program, and I'm just not sure that. We looked at right sizing this for the actual demand. I fully. Accept the need to modernize it in the ways, as McCarthy said, but I want it to be looked at on. How many? Pet locations are needed within the camp.
Okay, so yeah, I'm not sure it's the number. But you know, it's very loud. The dogs can see each other, set each other off.
That's that's about the modernization, the segregation, not the number.
So what I was trying to suggest. I mean, we've seen cost overruns. We see cost overruns on our own projects. Not that we would limit it to the previous amount of money, but that we would enable staff to negotiate. For capital improvements. Which I read is the main. The main negotiating point here. But what I was trying to say earlier was, I think we. The app places memo suggested that we don't know what the total cost is right now. And what I was suggesting that we would authorize or we'd ask staff to. As part of these negotiations, come up with a fixed number, so we will know what we're authorizing. But not that it would be zero, which it sounds like is what the motion is.
Not that it would be zero.
Zero additional.
You left off the additional part.
So I think we're kind of beyond that and.
Well, we, in my mind, we're not necessarily beyond it if we have. Size this greater than the need. And so my hope was that we would look at. Both the sizing and the modernization and come up with a recommendation.
Well, can I ask staff and again, maybe pets in need?
And.
My understanding was you're not talking about. Changing the external structure of the building, right? It's the kernel, the kennel space within the existing walls. So. So what we're looking at?
Well, the recommendation from pets in need was to demolish the existing kennel building and build something new.
Okay.
And and let me clarify, if you look at G. It does not specifically state. That we have a hard cap on the dollars.
Well, there's nothing here about, I guess what I'd like to see maybe is. Some ability for staff to negotiate an additional capital investment. If we feel like it's needed.
Well, what I was intending in the motion and would like to stick with is that I want to give the direction to. Try to. Constrain costs while meeting the modernization needs, and that includes. Two additional factors from what was considered before. One is to look at right sizing. And maybe the answer is. We need the full number of of stalls that that are being currently proposed. And the second is that we have had over the years, a number of assertions by supporters. Of. Of the pets. And that that private fundraising could supplement our efforts. And so to give the green light to looking at both of those things without. Predetermining an outcome, and I am not inclined to at this point in time say. Oh, we want to write. Be. Come back with with a blank check. I I we have so many needs that are unmet in this community financially. And then our capital programs that I'm not prepared to do that. I want to see if we can come up with good solutions to the problem, and that's the way it was framed. But it's not narrowly prescriptive.
So. So does staff know how many? How much money is left currently?
I believe it's 1.6 million.
Okay. Well, I would still be willing to authorize some amount if if other council members are interested at this point. I do think we have a shelter. I understand mayor's position. The yeah, I'll wait and see if anybody else is interested. And then. And what is the current termination date? Based on the notice, is it like next? Is it like this November or something?
Yeah, November of this calendar year.
Okay. So again, hopefully pets in need will take this in a positive way. Our request to extend that six months. I think. Hopefully, that's not a showstopper. Yeah, we can can move on. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Koo.
Thank you, and it's very nice to meet you, Ms. McCarthy. And I do have a question. Have you seen a drop in the number of? Dogs that have come into the shelter?
Since COVID? Or over what period of time?
Over the last three years since you guys have been in operation.
It's been pretty. It's been fairly steady since we come in from from the from the ACOs from the city, yes.
But has all the kennels been utilized?
They have not. So the way that we came up with the number is looking at sort of what is the average number of of animals that we have in the shelter. Based upon also best standards practice, say that the capacity for care is at 80% just so you can have some sort of a. And, you know, a viable sort of airflow and space provided. So we have that. And then there's also. We have animals that we bring in as well. So, you know, I'm not going to pretend that we're only doing animal services from Palo Alto. We're actually also offering, you know, services to the community. We're helping other shelters with. Their no kill rates, et cetera. And I think Palo Alto would be proud that they're providing these services to the community. And other areas that are, you know, having hardships. And so those come out to. You know, certain number of animals as well. And then we always have to, you know, there's some days when we might get four or five animals that come in from animal control. And so there's those surge periods that we have to. We have to care for as well. So.
Thank you.
That's how we came up with the number. And we're actually, the capacity that we're suggesting is less than what was under than what was approved. For in the contract. So the contract approved, it was a total of 38 kennels. And so we're we're actually because it no, actually, sorry, it it yeah, it's 38 because we have 22 plus 16 additional. And what we're asking is is for a total of 20, a total of 24.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. So which takes me to see. Is the maker mayor, are you trying to limit the size there or?
So the intention is to have us. Continue to provide the services to meet our community's needs, and I think Ms. McCarthy. Was accurate when she said that we would be proud to. Be providing services that not only met our own needs, but also helped other surrounding communities. But I think in reality. We are faced with. financial constraints that really don't enable us to do that. If we found through fundraising that that we could increase it and as part of that capital investment, it would exceed our community needs, and that's that's one thing. But I think that we need to be more focused on meeting all of the needs within our community on in this matter and in our partner communities that we serve.
Okay, that, thank you. Were you gonna say something?
Well, I was gonna say that that I think there's there's two questions embedded in, I think, where the mayor is going with this. One is, you know, if we built 16, 16 units in the kennel as opposed to 24, we save a million dollars, right? Which is, I think, sort of what what Councilmember DuBois was sort of going after when he said, well, is it sort of the same space but smaller units or rebuild the building and so forth? So that's one issue. The other one is, and I think, you know, I think that that we need to keep this in mind, too, is that you know, I'm not sure that the previous, the previous operation of the shelter was a a good reference point. I think Pets in Need has been much more active in terms of going out and finding animals to be adopted in our community. Right? And I think we gotta, we gotta consider that as well because it's probably a factor, too. So again, I think, but I do agree with the with the mayor that, you know, this is a discussion we should have with Pets in Need and come up with a a shared vision of what it is we're going to have here and how much it's going to cost. So that said, you know, I I don't think we should just simply limit it to the existing funding. I think it's going to take more than that. And I also think some of the 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 resources that that staff has suggested we consider, for example, you know, the S U M C fund and so forth. This is an appropriate use of those kinds of funds because it's investment in community infrastructure, right? So that said, right, I think this is a the kind of thing that we would be having a discussion with Pets in Need about as as this proceeds, assuming that everybody agrees to the to the timeline and so forth.
Okay. Are we?
But I but I but I I if I can add to that, I think, you know, I think pursuing a fundraising program to submit existing capital commitments is an interesting idea. I for one am not sitting here going, well, if that fails, I'm not willing to find more money for the for this effort, right?
Okay, so are we ready to vote on the motion or not? So, all right, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Settle?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Mayor Bird?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you for all the members of the public and Ms. McCarthy for participating, and I I hope that you have the sense to take back to your board that we we are looking forward to working out a a long term relationship. Certainly, we have some issues remaining to be resolved, but I think both parties are pointing in the same direction in that regard.
Thank you for the productive discussion. Thank you for letting me attend tonight.
Thank you. All right, so that brings us to council member questions, comments, and announcements. And you know, we're only at 9:34, and that gives us time to still get home on Valentine's Day. So any, any questions, comments, or announcements? Councilmember DuBois?
Just a comment, it's been announced already, but there's the ceremony tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. It's on the city's homepage. Signing ceremony with Bloomington, Indiana. It's the first sibling city. Should be fun, and there's some good speakers, so people attend.
I see no more hands, so on that note, we'll adjourn. Thank you.